Good evening. Welcome to the Board of County Commission Public Hearing on Thursday, October 13th, at 6:20 PM. We started it was scheduled for 6 o'clock. We're running it a little bit late due to the prior hearing. However, we're more on time than I anticipated us to be, so I'm very glad to do that. I'd like to open the meeting. We'll do, open it up actually with Pledge of Allegiance, because we didn't do that at the last meeting.
Okay, Madam Chair, would you like an invocation as well?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner White?
Heavenly Father, I pray that you'll guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions on a finite resource this evening. And as always, I send prayers and ask for blessings for our first responders and members of our armed forces, that you'll guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We are doing comprehensive plan amendments this evening, and I'd like to welcome the Board of County Commission Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing. The Board of County Commission will consider the transmittal of four comprehensive plan amendments for review by the State Land Planning Agency, and the board will consider the adoption of small-scale amendments to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. The board will also concurrently consider a major modification to the plan development zoning of a property that is the subject of Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment The board will also consider the adoption of a text amendment to the plan, as well as the annual adoption of the capital improvements program and the update to the capital improvements element of the plan. I will now request that the planning commission, well, before I do that, let me do this and do a roll call to determine a quorum and attendance.
Overman?
Here.
Cullen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you very much. I'll now request that the planning commission staff begin the first item on this evening's agenda.
Perhaps she's waiting for an introduction. There we go.
Good evening, commissioners, Yannika Mills, Planning Commission Staff.
There we go.
I'll be presenting HCCPA 2207, Island Recreation Future Land Use Category.
You may proceed, thank you.
At the request of the Board of County Commissioners, Planning Commission Staff and county staff were asked to work with the owner of Pine Key Island to collaborate on creating a new future land use category. So this is a publicly initiated plan amendment to establish the new future land use category of island recreation. This category may be used to designate any privately-owned island, including Pine Key Island, to designate with this new future land use classification that would fit the intended uses and unique characteristics of the site. As a side note, the privately-initiated map amendment that was moving forward with this publicly-initiated text amendment has since been withdrawn by the applicant and will have to come back at a later date to process a plan amendment to be considered for this future land use designation if they so please. In creating this new future land use category, staff researched the comprehensive plan of several local jurisdictions to assist in creating this new future land use classification as well. Future land use plan category descriptions are adopted within the future land use element and are broken into four main categories. Those are the residential growth density, typical uses, maximum floor area ratio or square feet, and then the specific intent of the category. As for the residential growth density that could possibly be considered on the site, no residential will be permitted with the exception of a caretaker facility. As for typical uses that could be considered on the site, outdoor passive recreation could be considered, open space, public beach water access, limited special events, temporary vendors, and enclosed storage that's related to the upkeep of the island. When creating the typical uses, staff did coordinate with Development Services staff to ensure that the terminology being used coincided with the land development code. As for the maximum floor area ratio that could be considered on the site, a .025 FAR or up to 20,000 square feet of non-residential could be considered with the building scale that's complementary to and not detrimental to the environmental nature of the site. As for the specific intent of the category, the Island Recreation Future Land Use category is to designate islands that will allow limited development of recreational uses that are, again, not detrimental to the environmental features of the sites. Additionally, accessory uses such as restrooms, picnic areas can be considered. At the rezoning stage, development will be subject to a plan development or site plan-controlled zoning district. This new future land use category is not intended to designate islands that are acquired through the Environmental Lands and Acquisition Program or any state, federal, or nonprofit agency. Additionally, it's not the intent of Hillsborough County to provide islands with public services or infrastructure such as potable water or fire services. This amendment was distributed to the Tampa Bay Estuary, the Audubon Society, the Sierra Club, the Agency on Bay Management, the Port Authority, and several other agencies. Staff received a comment back from Tampa Bay Estuary, which stated that they would not be able to submit formal comments at this time. However, they did provide sections from their conservation management plan, which references their need to provide and manage recreational uses of the bay. Comments from the Environmental Protection Commission express that development of recreational use on the island has the potential to cause environmental impacts from developments such as docking structures and wetlands, power generation, restrooms, and waste disposal. It is my understanding that at the development stage, any proposal would be reviewed by the Environmental Protection Commission, and the site would need to meet regulations at that time. Other than those comments, there were no objections received. Planning Commission staff reviewed the comprehensive plan amendment and found that the creation of the Island Recreation Future Land Use category would be consistent with the following adopted policy guidance within the comprehensive plan. Policy 7.1 of the Future Land Use Element, which speaks to the future land use map being used to make an initial determination regarding the permissible locations for various land uses and the maximum possible levels of residential densities and intensities. Policy 10.9, which speaks to the land use suitability and implementing and reviewing and taking measures to restrict and eliminate inappropriate and unsafe development within the coastal high hazard area. Policy 10.12, which speaks to staff considering the impacts of new development on the evacuation and shelter space standards within the coastal high hazard area during the development review process. This plan amendment proposal is also consistent with policy direction within the private property rights element. Policy 1.2 of the private property rights element speaks to Hillsborough County considering in its decision-making the right of a property owner to use, maintain, develop, and improve his or her property for personal use or for the use of any other person subject to state law and local ordinances. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed text amendment HCCPA 2207 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills, that was excellent. That is the introduction to the amendment. We'll open it up a public hearing and allow for those that have signed up to speak, three minutes to speak. And I have three individuals that have signed up to speak on this item. First one being Peggy Matthews, who's signed up virtually.
Hi, Peggy Matthews, Pine Key. We've worked diligently with the staff, the planning commission staff, on this process as we were directed by you at a meeting in, I guess it was April or something, whenever it was. And we have worked long on this consensus-building process to come up with this language. And as owners of Pine Key, we are comfortable with this language as is. The environmental impacts to the island, there, once again, while I have submitted the environmental assessments by ESA, which is Environmental Science Associates, that there is no seagrass in the area, there's no nesting birds or turtles due to the high-energy shorelines. This language would allow our business to continue and serve your constituents, and we would still be able to adequately protect the island's resources. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jonathan McHenry. Is Mr. McHenry also attending virtually?
Yes, I am, hello. Jonathan McHenry, Pine Key, Tampa Bay. Anyway, I just wanted to follow up with what Peggy Matthews was saying. Yes, we did work tirelessly for months on this with planning commission staff as instructed by you all, and came to language that we're comfortable with moving forward. Now, all of this was a compromise for us, but it will provide us with the opportunity to continue to provide a boating destination for Tampa Bay and your constituents. Our environmental impact out there has been greatly reduced since we bought the islands, and that island was trespassed on and trashed for decades. And so we have really cleaned it up and reduced any sort of environmental impacts that were being caused. And there were quite a few before we bought in. And also, I'm out there all the time, and I'm talking from, talking to people from Michigan, Wisconsin, places like that, that the reason they chose to come to the Tampa Bay area was because of the island. So that's also putting tourist dollars into Tampa Bay's pockets. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McHenry. And next is Nancy Stevens, also attending virtually, who's indicated that she's speaking in opposition.
Hi.
Ms. Stevens available?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please proceed.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Stevens, with the Tampa Bay Sierra Club. And we did send a letter in with our concerns about this proposition, the wording in this proposition, there's a couple of key things we're concerned about. And primarily, the category is too broad. It's not really, it doesn't seem like it's limited to outdoor passive recreation. That's really not well-stated in there. It allows buildings up to 20,000 square feet, which I don't understand why something so large would be carved for passive recreation, and it would, that could possibly be, you know, encourage more intense recreational use, and that could potentially have adverse effects on the, on the water and wildlife in the area. The other concern is that it's not just limited to Pine Key Island. It can be for any public or privately-owned island. And again, with these broad parameters, other developers that maybe aren't so sensitive to the environment as the Pine Key owners are, could do things that are unforeseen. So it opens a door for other people to come in and develop the other islands in the bay or in the rivers. In particular, we have concerns about the wastewater. How would wastewater be handled, especially if there's lots of people using the island? Would there be septic systems? How would, how would these things be protected from storms and floods? Fuel storage, if there's fuel storage on the island, how would that be protected? And again, the restrooms, picnic areas, related structures, that's very open-ended as to what that could be. And if you're a lot up to 20,000 square feet, I don't understand why, again, why a restroom has to be that large. So it does, it seems much more than just a passive recreational use. And, you know, it really doesn't, it violates some of the codes of building into the coastal high hazard area, which, which these are. I mean, these are obviously areas subjected to floods. And I think those, you know, those are pretty much our concerns. We'd like to see the amendment written much more narrowly, to really specify passes, you know, what passive use is, and have the buildings be much smaller, and also more concerned about the environmental concerns and how things like wastewater and trash would be handled on these islands. Thank you.
Okay, that's the last speaker that I have signed up to speak to this item, so I will open it up for discussion. And do I close the public hearing at this point? Or, yes, I will close the public hearing on this particular item. And I'll recognize Commissioner White.
We had another speaker signed up.
We do?
Yes. Cole, he's over here in the corner with his hand up. Cole Weaver signed up.
In Saunders Library?
Madam Chair, it appears Cole Weaver is on virtually.
Okay, I just did not have Cole Weaver's name on the sign-up list, but...
And point of order, I think in a public hearing, anyone can step forward and speak, even if they're not signed up.
That's what I was thinking, too, yeah. So if, is it Cole Weaver is available to speak, you have three minutes.
Okay, I guess I'll address some of the previous concerns, is that a lot of that will be taken care of with zoning, and make sure that there are no impacts to the surrounding features of the island and to the bay. We've been operating since 2017 with no issues. There's also, you know, fire, a fire rescue in Apollo Beach that can come out. The Sheriff Department has boats and helicopters that come to the island pretty much every weekend and circle the island, so there, you know, isn't, we're not completely deserted from some of those public services that we have. I think, yeah, we've done a bunch of surveys with ESA, and there is no nesting birds or seagrass. We've also, you know, the island's been used as a recreational boating destination forever now, so I don't think we've added any more extra impact to the Tampa Bay area.
Okay, are you done, sir? We have another minute and 45 seconds.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other speakers that would like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, we'll open it up for board discussion. I see that Commissioner White, you're in the queue, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to be able to support this as drafted. We've received a formal letter in opposition from the Sierra Club. Our very own Executive Director of the EPC, Janet Lorton, has put some thoughtful comments on the record. And Ed Sherwood with the Estuary Program seems to have concerns. He's been calculated in his comments because his board, which I'm the vice chair of, only meets quarterly, and he hasn't had a chance to get this in front of his board, so rightfully so, he's been calculated in his comments. But I can sense that, as a scientist, he has some concerns. I do have a question for Mr. Gormly or Ms. Lundgren. Could the board, as a policy decision, decide to have this text amendment only apply to Pine Island and leave the remainder of the islands uncategorized and deal with them on a case-by-case basis?
Commissioner, I believe that you would have the latitude to do that. We do have some, at least one plan amendment that is, that is specific, I'm sorry, one plan category that is geographically specific. So given the very unique nature of this, this category and Pine Island, I believe that would be something that's within the board's purview.
Thank you very much. I'm not comfortable transmitting this as drafted, so if I can get a majority of the board to join me in opposing it as drafted, just a couple, and I'm not going to make a motion right now, because I want to hear, I see other commissioners in the queue, and I want to hear your comments, but a couple of ideas would be to get this thing amended so that it would just apply to Pine Island, like Mr. Gormly has said we can do, leave the rest uncategorized, or defer it for some more work. But I don't think we should transmit it tonight as drafted, and I'd love to hear everyone else's comments.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I can't support transmitting this tonight either. And as I've said at the workshop, this is a radical break from the way the islands of Tampa Bay have been managed in our lifetimes. And I don't think it's at all ready for transmittal. The EPC has significant concerns, Sierra Club. I have significant concerns. We, even if we're, I think we should try carefully, even if we were to put something like this on one island, just for the precedent setting and the, we would have to think carefully about how it could be. But certainly, what is in front of us tonight that could be applied to any and all islands, not just the ones in the bay, but the ones that are in the mouth of the Little Manatee River at Cockroach Bay, in the Ala Fire River, this is just much too broad for those, for the, all the islands. Keeping in mind that, you know, we know what we mean by this, and we know how EPC will guard as they zone things, and we know how, we trust even, we know how Mosaic has been good stewards of their islands in the bay. But once we change the comprehensive plan, it's there long after we're all gone, long after Mosaic has sold their islands to somebody else once they are done with their operations, or after somebody else comes and manages their islands. So we, if we're going to put something, a whole new category on the islands, we have to make sure that the language would work no matter who's reading it, whose islands it is. And, you know, all the islands, except for Pine Island, are surrounded by seagrass. Pine Island is not, because of the decades of heavy usage of boats driving up and parking on the beaches all these years. The rest of the islands are, they're manatee feeding grounds, redfish spawning grounds, their beaches are nesting grounds, and for some really important species. So we, you know, we have to be careful. Right off the top, 20,000 square feet of building, pavement, development, as specified in here, is, in my view, much too big for any of the islands. The idea that the category allows some residential on these islands, it says no residential except facilities, plural, to serve a caretaker. Well, that could be plenty of residential if the caretaker has a family, I mean, or if the caretaker has staff, or if the caretaker needs even occasional seasonal dormitories for America, you know, that volunteer group that comes and does cleanups or stuff. I mean, I can imagine that this could allow, this could open the, open the door for more residential, or at least seasonal, or cleanup crews, or volunteers, and of course, camping. And if anyone is spending any night there, that, in a caretaker facility, well, they're going to need a built structure, the caretaker facility, not a tent. And now you're talking about restrooms, you're talking about waste disposal, power generation for air conditioning and heating and cooking and refrigeration, and fuel storage. Once you have a caretaker facility, you're talking about all of that, all of that. And EPC, in their comments, recommend that it be stated that onsite disposal of solid waste is prohibited. Well, what's the residential caretakers and their family, or the visitors and their customers going to be able to do if they can't do onsite disposal of solid waste? How, how would that work? They can't even wash their dishes, or wash their hands, or shower or bathe, or have a wastewater system. But the text of the amendment talks about restrooms, plural, naturally, if you're having any development of recreational facilities beyond just people coming up in a boat and picnicking. And so it's just too vague about how the county shall not expand the scope of our water and sewer service, but it says solid waste and public safety services, such as fire protection, may be allowed through other methods approved by the county. Well, I don't, this really needs, would need to be fleshed out or clarified. Too much is unclear. And, I mean, finally, how are we even thinking about caretaker residential housing on these islands two weeks after Ian, Hurricane Ian? These are, you know, these little mangrove islands in our bay and in our rivers, they are naturally very dynamic. They're not like a state out there. They, they change shape, and they actually move around as storms come and go, sometimes taking the beach sand away and sometimes disposing more sand. So the mangrove shorelines come and go. These are part of the natural furniture and natural habitat of Tampa Bay and our rivers. And once we start allowing any private owner to develop them for profit, they're going to need to protect that development by shoring up the islands with seawalls, or riprap, or, you know, berms, or whatever. They're going to need to defend their investment against natural erosion, and even just the daily wind and wave action, much less storms and tidal action, especially if housing is allowed, if only for the safety of those, whoever lives there as a caretaker or whatever. So, and then people have to come and go via docking facilities, and so, you know, there really needs a lot more look at how we would be protecting the habitat, and what some of these terms mean, like active recreation included, as well as passive recreation, and temporary vendors, and enclosed storage. You know, I could just see a lot that could be let in once you have the camel's, camel's nose under the tent. You can get the whole camel after a while. Because what this is doing is saying, we're changing our mind about how we're viewing these islands. So once we do this, this can then be changed to say, well, all right, we're thinking about commercial, we're thinking about, you know, these kinds of intense uses on our islands. So I'm a no on this, and in fact, I'll make a motion for denial, not to transmit tonight.
Second?
Thank you.
Mr. Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I concur with the remarks that have been made by both Commissioner White and Commissioner Smith. I just, the unintended consequences of this, especially on the heels of Hurricane Ian and what we saw, I mean, we have really got to think about this much more carefully. more carefully. And I certainly do not have a level of comfort with this at all. In fact, I'm wondering if, it just seems like perhaps we could use some more expertise in trying to, you know, look at this request, this privately initiated request. And I'll say, first off, I totally would never support anything that would put this as a category rather than just on Pine Island. And each of these islands are very, very different. We're talking here about an eight-acre island. That's, that's all it is, with, you know, without, apparently, the seagrass is the nesting birds, the turtles. But that would be, I mean, I know the applicant says it's high-energy, intense wave action. We don't have any expert to talk about why necessarily that is. So I don't necessarily accept that as being the reason why. This island has been, as we all know, intensely used to the point that our code enforcement had to move out there because it didn't have a category. Again, I'll just repeat, I would never be supporting moving this to all categories of all islands. That is really radical, dramatic action. The other thing that I feel very, very uncomfortable with is, I was kind of, I'll tell you, shocked by the 20,000 square feet, eight acres. 20,000 square feet is a half-acre building. And, you know, for, they said storage or whatever. And I looked at the island, it has this little teeny shoreline, it has, you know, all the trees in the center. So I'm guessing that that's like, I don't know how much of the shoreline, but they're not going to build this building on the shoreline. So they're going to take down, you know, many of these trees because it's densely covered in the middle. But I'm imagining, too, that that's part of what makes that island secure a little bit, is the trees and the, you know, tree canopy. But the 20,000 square feet, I also looked in the designation to say, how in the world did you come up with 20,000 square feet? Where does that come from? And I don't know. I read the explanation, and it doesn't look to me like it's predicated on anything much from the, I had it queued up here, but honestly, it didn't seem, there's nowhere in here where it says, well, this is eight acres and is expecting this, and so we'll have 20,000 square feet to do this. I mean, it just seemed like it was pretty unrationalized in terms of, you know, being appropriate for an eight-acre island. And appropriate, then I know I'd asked, well, how many people will be allowed to use for recreation? And it was just like, well, you know, that's something we can't say anything about, or we might be able to, how does that get enforced? And when does that come up with the rezoning? Again, I think this probably, this single island has to be in its own category. And I just think probably a rezoning, this is one of the cases where I think really strongly that this would be a comp plan with the rezoning in it. So we could do some predictability about it, and that it didn't, you know, move to other items. So I will not be supporting this tonight as it is. And I do think if we keep going, we have to, we really need some, maybe some outside expertise, like an expert consultant that we employ to give us some, you know, information about how to proceed with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Let me start off by addressing Commissioner White's original question about anything that would be done to be restricted to just this island and not applied, you know, to everything that's out there. It seemed to me as the opposition and the concerns were rolling in, and emails were coming in, that the biggest issue was that it looked as though there was this carte blanche going out to start applying this to every single island. And obviously, that's not what the board wants to do, and I think for good reason. Because, I agree with Commissioner Kemp, that because this could be heard along with the companion zoning, it really ought to be taken that way, so that we could make decisions about the actual details of what would be allowed or not allowed. You know, in our hearing on this, a couple of, I guess it was about six months ago now, we instructed this applicant to go back and go through this process. And I think that it's fine for us to not like what the product is that came back, but I think that we have to give them some guidance of what they need to do to bring us something that will allow them to operate. Because that's how this all got started. They had, if I remember correctly, had been operating, and they made really great improvements to what was going on before they started operating. And we were trying to find a way to give them a legal construct in which they could keep operating. So I don't think it's enough to just deny it, because that's going to leave them in limbo. I think we have to give them some guidance about what we want to see. And it sounds to me like, I mean, it sounds to me like if we can limit whatever is going to be allowed, and mix it with a PD that allows us to actually control the details, that that might alleviate some of the concerns. I mean, clearly, a 20,000-square-foot building is totally inappropriate on this island. But I would think that as part of a PD process, we could come to an agreement about what would be appropriate, and it would only apply to this particular island and not to anything else. So I'm going to certainly support not going forward with this tonight, but I don't want us to just leave it hanging out there. I think that we need to have an action plan so that this, I think these applicants have been working in good faith, and we need to get them to the finish line so they can at least continue to operate, you know. And if there are going to be restrictions that they don't like, or we don't like, we're going to have to argue them through at some point as part of a zoning application.
Commissioner White, I'll go ahead, I do have a comment, but I'll go ahead and recognize you first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at some point, a substitute motion may be in order to defer this and get it paired up with a rezoning. If that motion were to get made and were successful, you know, I'll just put some thoughts on the record. What I think I'm hearing for staff is, I think 20,000 square feet on the building is a nonstarter. You know, I think that we would need more answers with respect to what their plans would be, with respect to handling any potential sewage, potable water, things like that. And I would also ask that, if this takes the direction that Commissioner Cohen is looking for, that staff speak with our natural resources experts, or someone from the outside, maybe with the Audubon Society or something like that. The island is covered with Australian pines. I don't know if it's strictly Australian pines, or if there's some other designation there, but that's not a native tree. It's considered to be an invasive. They topple over very easily in high winds. With that being said, though, I know that sometimes the experts are of the opinion that sometimes non-native vegetation can be okay if there's established bird habitat there, or something which the owner's saying there's not in this case. But if this were to move forward paired up with a rezoning, I would want to understand whether or not the applicant could replace those invasive trees with some native species, that sort of thing. So, anyway, I'll go ahead and make a substitute motion to defer this and do some further work on the comp plan amendment, and get it paired up with a companion rezoning.
So we have a motion, a substitute motion by Commissioner White. Is there a second?
I'll second that. I'd like the, I think the other piece of it, though, that's very important, is that whatever comes back only apply to this property, that it not be, that it just be a standalone. Somebody could come and ask for this later on on another piece, but that's entirely separate.
I'm happy to incorporate that into the motion. So we'll consider that into the motion on the floor.
And I wanted to make a comment, and it actually is in line with the motion, so I think it still applies. There is some good work being done here, but I, too, have grave concerns about it applying to other islands that have not been impacted environmentally like this island has. If, in fact, there is little to no wildlife left on this island as a consequence of many years of human interaction, then that, you know, if that can be proven, it was, it does address what we are hearing is concerns by our community that is concerned about wildlife and the environment, that are looking at this going, what are we thinking? So in reading it, there was a lot of good things, but there were some concerns about greater clarity. And, you know, when items are described as being suitable, and I can't figure out what suitable really means in the context of this circumstance, you know, that needs greater clarity. It really does. It just needs greater clarity, because I don't know what suitable is, because this is an island out in the middle of nowhere, you know. So what's suitable? So in this, because it is so different than any other circumstance that we would agree, then it's going, I think having it move with a zoning, or having it be more clear in the comprehensive planning element to give them good guidance on what they could anticipate might be approved in a zoning, is important. And obviously, I think we're getting closer. I think there's been some good work here. But I think there's greater clarity that's necessary by this board in order to figure out whether or not a transmittal at this point is appropriate. And I would agree in not transmitting, and I will support the motion at this point. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I think that there's so much that would have to be rewritten in what is before us tonight, that my preference would be to have stayed with the motion to not transmit this. And then if you wanted to make another motion to direct staff to start from, you know, with what the discussion is, and start over with a comprehensive plan amendment and a companion zoning that would only apply to Pine Island. I think this is, you know, was really written kind of very, very broadly. And if it's going to go back to the drawing board to start over for just Pine Island, I think it needs to start from scratch. So rather than, like, deferring this to come back with a zoning, I would, I would prefer to be, stick with the original, don't transmit this. And then if you want to make a second motion about what you do want to bring back, do that. And I see maybe the planning commission has some thoughts.
Yep. Ms. Leinhardt is in the queue, so she was next. You're recognized.
Thank you. With regard to a potential continuance, because that is the substitute motion on the floor, I would respectfully ask that that would be continued to the January cycle. 2023 dates have not yet been solidified, so that would be our next in cycle. And the other item that I would ask is just to clarify whether the plan development, the rezoning, would be a requirement in coming back, just to make sure that that is clear and on the record. Thank you.
Excellent. That's, that would probably provide everybody with a good roadmap on where they're trying to go. So that is your motion?
Well, I'm back, I'm back in the queue, Madam Chair.
You're right after, you're recognized.
I'm actually agreeable to what Commissioner Smith wants. So if Mr. Gormly and Ms. Lundgren can help us craft a substitute motion that would accomplish that, that the comp plan amendment is starting from scratch, I do think there's merit, though, in having a rezoning as a companion to it, though. So it would be starting from scratch with the comp plan amendment, but then getting a companion rezoning with that brand-new, from-scratch comp plan amendment.
Yes. I think, Commissioners, I think that would be appropriate. And in fact, that was the discussion that was had the last time this was here. The board had requested that the applicant submit a plan development zoning, and I think that's the basis for the suggestion that it be made, a requirement of this.
So can my motion just be stated in those plain and simple layperson's terms?
I believe so, yes. And the other element that they would need is, this amendment would create the new future land use category. There was, there was another amendment that would have applied it to Pine Key, and that was withdrawn by the applicant. So that would be another element that would need to come in with this. So that we would redo the category, they would refile a plan amendment to have that category applied to Pine Key, and submit a plan development zoning to all three, come back to the board. And then you'd have the category created, the category applied to this land area, and the plan development zoning that would come with it. I think that is, that is a package, I think, would provide the best opportunity to address some of the questions that we heard here. How is it all going to work? How is it going to look?
Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to remove my motion, and I'm going to make a new substitute motion that moves Mr. Gormly's recommendation.
What he just said, right. We move whatever Mr. Gormly just said, right.
I'll remove my second from your first motion and second your second motion.
Okay. You know, it's not nine o'clock yet, folks, okay? I have a question. I do. I have a question on this issue. In this particular case, what I'm a little concerned about is Pine Island is very different than any of our other islands. So I'm curious if what we're trying to do is address the issue of just Pine Island, you know, of what the circumstances is, based on its current state, that if I understand it correctly, is considerably different than the state of our other islands that have not had as much human interaction over the years. So in order to accommodate what is specific to Pine Island, and put that in our comp plan amendment, that doesn't necessarily address the natural state of the conditions of the islands that have not had as much human interaction. And the reason I ask that question is because there were not a great deal of detail in the document we're not transmitting, per se, on the impact of wildlife, what species. There was, there was some work that needed to be done to fully embrace whatever, you know, wildlife species, whether they be animals and/or plants, or whatever, you know, that would inhabit an island. You know, we, a lot, we have a lot of lists of species, but does that apply to the species that frequently migrate in, come in and out, aren't stayed, like, the other day, we had the falconer that came in and said, you've got to address when that specific falcon migrates here. But if you don't look at that inventory during that time period, you're going to miss that that's a very important protected species, as opposed to the one that, you know, happens to be around all the time. So, you know, if we're looking at Pine Island alone, and coming up with a comprehensive land use, and, you know, the zoning associated with it, that makes sense, because it does, it would not apply to other islands that had not had as much habitation as this one does. And I think, to be fair to the owners, they've tried to address that by restoring some sensibility about how the island's been used in the past. But I want to make sure we don't find ourselves back in square one with islands that have not had the similar impact. So with that, I see that we have Commissioner Kemp, and Commissioner White, and the planning commission all in the queue, so.
I'll just, I think everybody was probably on the same path with this, but just to be clear, this is, as I understand the motion, and as was expressed, only applying to Pine Island. This is its own category with its own PD and that. If someone else comes, Commissioner Overman, and they want their island or their place to, again, do something, that's when I think these other elements come in for that. Because this will apply, this, as we have it in this form right now, would apply to all kinds of places. This now, this is a singular category of application for just Pine Island. So it will not speak to any of those other places.
Right, exactly. And that was what I wanted to make sure was very clear. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say, this is not expert testimony. I'm not an expert, but what I believe is going on with Pine Island, in addition to the human interaction, that certainly has impacted the island, but the, one of the shipping channels skirts very close to Pine Island, and that thing just gets hammered with ship, with shipwakes. hammered with ship, with ship wakes. I think that's probably what the applicant was talking about with the wave action or whatever term was used. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but that is something that's, that's unique about Pine Island is that the shipping channel skirts very, very close to the island, and in my observation, much closer than the other spoil islands in Upper Tampa Bay. But I could be wrong. That's not expert testimony, but I, I do believe that adds to the unique situation here.
Okay. Ms. Leinhardt, Planning Commission?
Thank you. Due to the complexity of this request and just the very nature of this topic, I would ask for some clarification on the three items that Mr. Gormly mentioned. In, in our mind, the way that I would see it is that there would, there would be a publicly initiated creation of the category like we have today, and then the rezoning and the map amendment to said category would be privately initiated. We have spent an inordinate amount of staff time on this, so I just wanted to gain some clarity for the sake of the future applicant for Pine Key Island, that staff would have a specific role with the publicly initiated creation of the future land use category, and certainly we would work together, just like we have to date, but that the role for the other two items, the map amendment actually switching it to that category, and the rezoning would be the responsibility of the private applicant.
Mr. Gormly.
I, I believe that that would be an appropriate approach.
Your mic is not on, sir.
I'm sorry. Especially on the plan development zoning, how is it all going to work? I think we, we really need the input from the applicant on that, and we need them driving that, that application as opposed to us trying to initiate a rezoning on them and come up with that information. I think that would be very appropriate.
Okay, that's, that's good guidance. Commissioner White, are you satisfied with that? Okay, so Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. And see, this is the problem I have. We have, the procedure is to make a comp plan amendment that would apply to any island and then have the applicant ask to apply it to their island. So it's like, we're making a category for Res 16, and now somebody, which we've never had, and now somebody comes along and they say, okay, now I want my parcel to have, we were going to now make a map amendment. This is a text amendment describing a new category that could apply to any island, and now you have a map amendment that says, all right, thank you, now I want to apply that category to my island. But that doesn't stop anybody from applying it to their island unless it, the category could be written so narrowly that it says it's got to be next to a shipping channel or some other things that it could nev, that there just could never be another island that it could apply to.
Commissioner, I believe that that could be crafted, it could be crafted just specifically to apply to this particular land area.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And that, that would have to be done, I'm sure, to satisfy everybody, but I just want to go on record as saying what I think I said the first time, is that I'm going to go along with listening to what comes back from this, so I'm going to support listening to what comes back that would just apply to Pine Island. But if anybody thinks that, that they're going to come back and say, well, now we've, you know, you've told us we could go further down this, and now we've spent all this time, and we've invested all this money, and you still don't like what we're doing, I'm going to say, yep, I'm sorry, I still don't like what you're doing. I am very, very skeptical about having something that will not set a precedent, that for future owners of this island to be expanded upon. I'm, I'm very concerned about the caretaker, the residents, the solid waste disposal, the kinds of uses that are included in active recreation and storage and fuel storage and solid waste disposal and all of that. I am unlikely to support what comes back. I'm just putting that out there. But I'm going to go along because maybe, maybe we'll see something that is, just to go along, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. That, you made that very clear. Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
I, I'm with you. Just, I'll just say that because that is exactly, you know, my concern, I think it's been expressed here over and over again, but just in case there's any doubts, you know? And I think the other thing that was very clearly expressed, bringing it back with the PD is, you know, with regards to the 20,000 square feet, so.
Ms. Leinhardt.
Thank you. Lots of talking tonight. To clarify, Adam is correct. We, we do have future land use categories that are site-specific, that are associated with certain geographical areas, so we can work with that. The other item that I would ask for clarification on is the uses, what the board direction would be with regard to active versus passive uses, because I'm hearing that as a discussion piece, and we would want to get that right. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion? And we have a second?
Before, Madam Chair, before we dispose of the motion, I think the Planning Commission's looking for that.
I'm just, I was like, is there anybody going to offer some guidance here? All right, Commissioner Smith?
If I were ever in a, to, to support some uses on an island in Tampa Bay, it would be in a leave no trace way. That's what I'd be looking for, leave no trace. The, you know, the fact that this island has been impacted and has pine, you know, invasive species on it, I've seen that kind of argument be used before to say, oh, there's nothing but Brazilian pepper on this site, so it's already trashed. That's not how I feel about the islands in Tampa Bay nor this island. I am, you know, maybe more open than I led on to, to having this recreation happen here, but it would have to be what we always think of as passive and, and like, the end of the day, you, it seems like nobody was there.
That's pretty clear. Okay, Commissioner White?
What's that, what's that saying that you see on a lot of signs? Take only pictures, leave only footprints? No, I just wanted to make one final comment and to say, and I don't, I don't believe I'm even going to be here for the final vote on this, but just as a final comment, Commissioner Smith, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I really don't. But I, I do think that Commissioner Cohen's suggestion has merit in, in the sense that these folks have come a long way. I think they've gotten to a place to where they're looking for direction from the board, and I think they just deserve at least taking a crack at it to see what they can come up with. But to your point, Commissioner Smith, whatever lands in front of this board is going to have to be voted up or down, but I think they deserve a chance to just, you know, try to get something else in front of the board.
I see Commissioner Smith and Commissioner White. Okay, so you guys are done? Okay, great. All right, with that, we wouldn't be taking a vote to transmit, and, but we do need to vote on the motion, so with that. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because this is a question I asked staff today, is define suitable, and you touched on that this afternoon, because it's important when you think about the environmental, and it's just open, what is suitable? So I think in coming back to us, that should be defined for Pine Island.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Okay, I think we're good?
Yes.
Are we good? I think the, the applicant has some good feedback on the things. The Planning Commission, you're good?
Yes, ma'am.
You're good? Okay. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yeah.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to A2, the HCCPA 2214, the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, privately initiated amendment to the Corridor Preservation Map One to remove Lisi Road extension. And from the Planning Commission, we'll hear from Wade Reynolds. Is that correct? Okay. Mr. Reynolds, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. This is Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, CPA 22-14. It is an amendment to the Corridor Preservation Plan, which is map one of the mobility elements. This is a privately initiated amendment to remove the Lisi Road extension from the corridor preservation map. This is the overall corridor preservation map. You can see the red box in the lower area of the map referring to the, the subject's This is just a zoom in of that. You can see the Lisi Road extension with the red arrow and Paseo El Mar to the north of that, 19th Avenue northeast to the south.
Wade, Wade, we can barely hear you, or it's just not very clear. It's sort of muffled.
I'll try to speak up.
Do you have paper over your microphone by some chance? Sometimes that can be the impact. Anywhere on your keyboard?
No, ma'am, but I'll do my best to speak up.
Yeah, we're having difficulty hearing you.
Is it, are you able to hear me now?
That's a little better, but if you could get your volume up, it would be very helpful.
Mr. Reynolds, this is HCV. If you need any assistance, just let us know.
Yes, can you tell me how to make sure that I am connected to, to my headphone microphones?
Yes, if you go to the microphone button there on the bottom left, there should be like a little drop-down arrow. Yep, you should be able to make sure that it's using the right microphone there.
Is that better?
Can you try that again?
Yes, sir. Is that better?
Not really.
Commissioners, is it, is it too low in the boardroom?
Yes. That may be, I mean, that's communications, that's not him.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds, if, if you want to adjust the microphone level, go back to that dropdown menu. There should be audio settings button.
Yes, sir.
When you click on audio settings, you should be able to control your volume.
Okay, it's all the way up. Thank you.
Okay, you're perfect. Don't do a thing. Stop, stop what you're doing. You're good. We can hear you now.
You can see 19th Avenue northeast to the south of the subject right there.
Yep, we can see you.
This is the portion of the road requested for removal from the map. Just a little bit of area background. The existing Lisi Road is on the west side of US 41. There is a signal there, and then there is a small piece of it east of US 41, and then the right-of-way is preserved up to the CSX railroad tracks. Background, the Corridor Preservation Plan is designed to preserve right-of-way for future growth. The map does not require construction of any roadways, but sets right-of-way widths to be preserved as adjacent land develops. There is a 2013 agreement between Hillsborough County and CSX requiring Lisi Road to be braid separated from the CSX tracks. The applicant roadway volume analysis states that the expense of an overpass construction and projected volumes do not justify the construction of that roadway. We did receive one comment from Community and Infrastructure Planning. They speak to the analysis of, of this roadway volume based on the 2045 Tampa Bay Area Regional Planning Model, which is what the year we use for FDOT and long-range planning improvements. They are currently updating this map based on 2070 population and job numbers, which is at least part of where that comment comes from. There are a number of comprehensive plan policies that speak to this, excuse me. 4.1.3 Incorporate Context-Sensitive Subdivision and Access Management Standards to Provide Multiple Connections for Modes and Routes. 4.1.4 Ensure That Roadways Accepted By The County Serve A Public Purpose By Completing The Connection Between Two Or More Roadways. Stubbing out, be stubbing out adjacent, to adjacent properties that can reasonably provide opportunities to complete connections between two or more roadways defined as arterial collector or major local road. And 4.2.3 Ensuring That New Developments Are Consistent With The Adopted Corridor Preservation Plan By Reviewing Them During The Site and Subdivision Plan Review Process. And finally, 5.3.3 Implement Measures To Reduce Average Trip Distance Such As Additional Street Connectivity Fostering More Local and Retail Service Businesses To Support A Mix Of Land Uses. The Planning Commission recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Incorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation. Is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Elise Batzel with Sterns Weaver Miller. We have nine applicant representatives that are here around our table tonight, and I know that you typically give three minutes per person. If it's okay with you, we'll just have one main speaker and our transportation engineer and go as quickly as possible, if that's acceptable to you.
I don't know. Of course, of course. Thank you.
Of course. So may I share my screen, please? Can you see that?
We can see it on the computer. Yes, yes, we can now.
The full screen? So this is a request tonight to take a small portion of the Lisi Road extension off of the Hillsborough Corridor Preservation Plan. And it's the segment of roadway that we typically refer to as the road to nowhere. Before we dig into our request, I thought it would be helpful to tell you how we got here. In April of 2019, the applicant, who also is the developer of Waterset, met with the county to discuss changes to the Waterset Plan Development. And at that point in time, we had a discussion with the county, and the county said, well, why are you even being required to build this roadway? It really is a road to nowhere. And so we kind of adopted that term and have been working with them on this issue all the way since 2019. Just to orient you, the segment of the roadway is located south of Paseo El Mar and Apollo Beach Boulevard, east of the CSX Railway, and north of 19th Avenue Northeast. It is within the Waterset community. And the applicant has been working with the county to provide studies. The study that you actually have seen as part of your record was requested by county transportation staff. And the reason that we're here with a privately initiated amendment is that the county's process has gotten delayed and delayed, and so now we are at a point where we have to start construction on this area in quarter one of 2023. So let me just highlight a couple of things before we dig in. Here's basically the points that we're going to cover tonight. The Waterset roadway alignments have evolved over time, and the major east-west corridors have changed from Lisi Road and moved north to Apollo Beach Boulevard, really eliminating the need for this small piece of right-of-way on the Corridor Preservation Plan. In 2015, the county and the developer agreed that these, this east-west extension would move to the north. You're also going to hear that the Lisi Road extension will not improve existing traffic conditions and levels of service. You're also going to hear that the Lisi Road extension, if it was ever built, and we'll talk about why that probably will never happen, but if it will ever be built, it's really just going to direct traffic and dump it right into a residential community to be dispersed and not function as an east-west corridor. So let's dig in a little bit. You can see here where we're talking about. It, it's really important as well, this green area to the east, that's the ELAP property that has been preserved. So we're going to take all of these pieces and kind of talk you through because I think it paints a picture that is, is very important. So this request is really the culmination of decades of small changes that have, over time, eliminated the need for this portion of Lisi Road west of the CSX Railway. So I want to be really clear that the area that we're talking about is only the area in the little box. As you can see here, in 2011, it was proposed that the developer-
Okay. Elise, are we- Elise, are we, do we do three minutes per applicant? Do you need another applicant to assist you in finishing the presentation?
I'm sorry, I thought that when we requested, we said that we would just have two people that would do it all, so that we don't have to keep stopping and starting. If you prefer where we could switch--
Well, no, that's, that would give you six minutes. Is that correct?
We have nine applicants--
You have nine applicants on the list?
We do. David Smith, Nicole Newgobauer, Tim Plate, Savannah, Christopher Hatton, myself, Alex McLeod, and Doug Smith. And we're all here.
Okay. I had five on the list, but that's, either way.
We'll go as quickly as we can. If you'd like me to switch, we can also switch.
Madam Chair, point of order, it sounds like they would be given 27 minutes. They've already used three. I would suggest that the clock be set at 24 minutes, and it sounds like they won't need all 24 minutes.
That's, that's what I was, yes, I would agree. Are you, are you okay with that, Ms. Batzel?
Absolutely, yes. We're just trying to be efficient for your time.
Understood, and I appreciate that. Right now, we've got on the clock, so you don't get interrupted again. 24 minutes, so thank you.
Thank you. So in 2011, one of the conditions of this approval required the developer to provide two continuous east-west crossings over Waterset. You can see the red arrow, that's what I was just talking about. The requirement was to build west of CSX. But you're going to hear in this presentation that a lot has happened between 2011 and 2022 that's really changed the need for this section of right of way. So in 2013, as part of a litigation settlement, Hillsborough County, CSX, and the developer entered into a tri-party agreement regarding the Apollo Beach Highway Railroad at-grade crossing. I think there was some misunderstanding about that. We're talking about an at-grade crossing. And what that agreement did is it prohibited the county from seeking any new CSX at-grade crossings anywhere between Big Ben Road to the north and 19th Avenue to the south. So this agreement was really the catalyst that started the realignment of the roadways in this area, and it eliminated the need for this section of Lisi Road. So also, right after that, in 2014, there were some development approvals that happened that just cemented this. In 2014, the county approved significant changes to the roadway alignments for Waterset within the DRI. So there's three or four changes that happened. They changed Table Two, which removed Lisi Road from US 41 to the northwestern Waterset DRI boundary, and replaced it with a little label that said Road A. So it was no longer labeled the Lisi Road extension, it was now labeled Road A. We also modified the intersection improvements to remove the US 41 and Lisi Road intersection requirement. That's also important. But I'm very visual, so I think this is more helpful. The red lines show Waterset Drive and this Lisi Road extension as it was in 2011 and as it is in 2014. As you can see, the main roadway changed from an east-west road to a more north-south road. So Lisi Road at this point in 2014 is really no longer one of the major right-of-ways within the community. It's a little side road. In addition, you can look at where the blue arrows are. All of a sudden, that Lisi Road extension no longer extended over the CSX railroad. It was no longer an obligation under the DRI. What this all is really saying is that the county reallocated and directed improvements and funds away from this Lisi Road area up to Apollo Beach Boulevard. And this really recognizes how the focus shifted northward. So consistent with the DRI changes, the developer went in and also had to make consistent changes to the plan development. You can see here, this is the roadway alignment changing Waterset from east-west to north-south. The Lisi Road extension access across the railroad was eliminated, and all of the same improvements that were just made in the DRI were now also made on the PD. And then we have the 2015 flyover agreement. And this, it's interesting, when I went back and read the agreement itself, it really does tell the story of the huge shift. So let's just take a moment. The county and the applicant entered into a significant agreement governing the I-75 flyover, which is located at the intersection of 75 and Apollo Beach Boulevard, which is the next main road north from Lisi Road. The agreement provides terms for the construction of the I-75 flyover, which would connect Apollo Beach Boulevard and County Road 672, which was consistent with the development order at this time. And this is really important because the county and the developer really made a concerted decision at that time to refocus their resources north for this major east-west connector. The applicant, I believe, committed $12 million, is that right, Tim? $12 million towards that I-75 flyover. And I just want to read this one quote from the agreement. "Due to the evolution of the Lisi Road extension project, the continued area development, and the acquisition of the Bullfrog Creek scrub," which is that ELAP land I showed you, "the proposed alignment," referring to the I-75 flyover, "represents the last opportunity for the county to construct a parallel east-west facility to Big Ben Road and North Avenue, 19th Avenue Northeast." I want to pause here because that was the last opportunity. Everybody at that point in time said, we are shifting these resources north. So in 2020, the last realignment happens. The county eliminated Road A on the PD, and the Lisi Road was still eliminated. So you sort of have this culmination in what exists on the property today. So one of the things we heard during the BOCC workshop is, well, why wouldn't we just build another flyover here? So we wanted to break this down into three points. Christopher Hatton from Kimley Horn is going to testify about the cost-benefit analysis. You're going to hear from him that the construction of the flyover, and this is really important, will not improve the level of services in the roadway. And you'll hear that flyover would require major unwarranted investments from the county funds, and I'm going to follow up there. Christopher?
Thank you, Elise. Good evening. My name is Christopher Hatton. I'm a registered professional traffic engineer with Kimley Horn. In coordination with county staff, we did conduct a detailed benefit-cost analysis for the Lisi Road extension. And what we found was this, that the Lisi Road extension, if constructed, would only serve approximately 2,700 vehicles a day, which is only about 10% of what a four-lane road would be expected to carry. So what does this mean? That would be significantly underutilized. The main reasons for this, well, as Elise pointed out, the Apollo Beach Boulevard east-west roadway is now the major east-west connector, especially now that the flyover over I-75 has been opened. In addition to the location of Lisi Road within the Waterset development, has transformed this road to honestly, to be more of a project driveway, as shown by the low project volumes, than a regional roadway. Now, during our planning commission hearing on Monday night, Matt Lewis asked if we had looked at the impact of not having Lisi Road in from a regional perspective. Therefore, we conducted that analysis just in the last two days, and as you can see from the highlighted regional roadways and the associated impact, just shown in this analysis here, the volumes without Lisi Road would be impacted, and this is the bottom part of the table here, at less than 3% impact of any of the regional roadways. So again, significantly impacted, it will not be. So lastly, but this is very important, is the potential cost of this roadway, which, due to the flyover nature of having to go over CSX, would be estimated over $12 million for a very small roadway, only a half a mile. So you can see that the cost significantly outweighs the benefit. So in summary, in my professional opinion, the Lisi Road extension will not have a significant benefit to the roadway network, and the Lisi Road extension does not warrant the cost of constructing the roadway and overpass. Elise?
Just very quickly, I'm sorry, Elise Batzel, for the record, Sterns Weaver Miller. One of the things that was also questioned was if this was ever going to be built, who would build it? Who would pay for it? And it's very clear that this would be a county cost. The developer doesn't have any additional build-out that would require any additional building any of these right-of-way. And I want to talk a little bit about what would actually have to happen to build the right-of-way, because I think there's a lot of misconception that, oh, just because we allow a corridor here and we make people reserve right-of-way, all we have to do is come back later and just build the road. But there are so many things that would have to happen to make this particular flyover occur. So the first thing is that someone other than the applicant, presumably the county, would have to construct four lanes west of CSX. I can tell you that the property to the north, not north of this piece, but over on the other side of CSX, they only had to build two lanes to their entrance. So they're still, that is not a four-lane right-of-way. The property to the south is in for zoning now, and as their counsel, I will tell you that building a four-lane right-of-way would not be roughly proportional to their impact. So there's no way that those four lanes are going to be built with these new developments by anyone other than the county. Second, the county would still have to build the two lanes within Waterset Boulevard. But here's where it gets really expensive and I think less viable. Someone is going to have to build the four-lane overpass, which Christopher has already told you, at today's cost will cost about $12 million. But we're also going to have to get CSX's permission to build over the right-of-way, and we all know how easy CSX is to deal with. They will likely come at some significant cost to the county as well. But finally, and this is a piece that as we started to investigate, all of this really became clear, the county is going to have to likely require a lot more right-of-way in order to build this overpass. We were looking at the schematics from the I-75 flyover, and there are portions of that right-of-way that span 250 and 300 feet at that I-75 flyover. So your normal 100 and whatever it is--
24 feet.
124 feet will likely be woefully inadequate. So really, in conclusion, you see this huge shift from the east-west right-of-way that was Lisi Road back in 2011 to this real north-south alignment, really eliminating the need for this extension. In 2015, we had this tri-party agreement where there are no more at-grade crossings at Lisi Road across CSX. You've heard from Christopher Hatton that this Lisi Road extension will not help the levels of service in the area. And if you look at your transportation corridor management explanation of what is on a corridor preservation plan, it says these roads have to establish increased transportation levels of service. This can't do that. The Lisi Road extension will practically, if built, just dump trips back into Waterset Boulevard. We do have planning commission's recommendation of approval, and we respectfully request you to transmit this application. Now, we have given you a lot of information. All of our experts are here, and we will be quiet now so that you can ask any questions that you have. Thank you very much for giving us so much time.
Thank you. With that, we will hear, this is a public hearing, and we do have opportunity for speakers to speak. Ms. Batzel, you gave us several names rather rapidly, and I'm going to go through the names that I have listed to speak to see if there's anyone that you didn't name still on this list. But I have yourself, I have Alex McLeod, McLeod?
He's with us.
He's with you, okay. Doug South?
Also with the applicant.
Okay. Suzanne Walker?
Yes, ma'am, with the applicant.
And Savannah Hancock?
With the applicant.
Okay. So seeing that we have no one else signed up, unless there's other persons that happen to be in the room at Saunders that would like to speak to this matter, and I don't see any, given no speech, we have no applicant rebuttal necessary, I'll open it up for board discussion. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. And I'd like to just put up there again, the aerial, from like Google Maps, the aerial oversight of the whole big area, not just this little area, if staff could do that. Yeah, that's, the other, that there, I think has, yes. And is there one with both of the red, a picture like that with both of these areas? But that's it? We don't have a picture with both of them? So go back to the other one. There's, go back to the other bigger view. Okay. I have to say, I found it, no, 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 the aerial overview that you were just at, that one. I'll have to say that I was utterly and completely shocked when this came before us in this fashion. I immediately got on the phone and asked to meet with staff, and I don't know, there's been a lot of hearsay about what some staff said in the past and named it the road to nowhere, whatever, and I think you should give the names of whatever staff they are, because I think there's got to be a problem if that occurred. This, to me, was very shocking. I think we have a terrible problem in this county with a lack of grid and passageway that is to a shocking extent. And I think that, you know, this has been something, apparently, and I'm going to have Mr. Gormley talk about it, because he was one of the first people that I went to and asked about what in the world is going on? How can this possibly come to us in this form in a privately initiated, you know, amendment to change something so significant as this? If you look here, you can see Paseo Del Mar there going east-west across the top, and 19th Avenue, and we see this enormous place in here that is having a blistering pace of development, of which Waterset is hugely responsible for and still has financial actual responsibility for apparently two of the lanes as part of this. And to think that we would not put, at this point, at least have it reserved to have another major east-west connector through a road there was just breathtaking to me that we could possibly even think about that for the future of this county. I know at one point, I actually, you know, I mean, to hear that, oh, well, that would cost $12 million at a half mile when Waterset, for one, was responsible for, you know, I don't know how much of that, but anyway, let me just tell you, half mile, $12 million, I'm talking about Leroy Salmonon Connector, one mile, $600 million. $12 million, I mean, the Lithia Pinecrest Road expansion, $35 million a mile, $40 million a mile for the Van Dyke. So $12 million to do a flyover is not shocking at all. In fact, I think it's, you know, if that would be true, it's a bargain. But anyway, I just was shocked that this could possibly come to us, and we wouldn't have staff that would give us some insight historically into this. Actually, I'm shocked in the presentation tonight to hear that it wasn't on the 2045 plan, when we've heard about the other things that are on the 2045 plan that I would say shouldn't be there. And all of a sudden, this very critical need is not on the 2045 plan is kind of, or wasn't, is kind of stunning to me with the growth that, as I said, the blistering pace of growth. But I would, before I go on, I'll just go to Mr. Gormley, because I know I contacted you and said, how does this possibly happen this way?
So Commissioner, thank you.
Your mic isn't on.
Your mic's turned.
Sorry, twice in one night. Just for some context, first of all, on the corridor preservation plan, the corridor preservation plan is a long-term, longer term than the 2045 plan, planning document to preserve future transportation corridors in the county. I will tell you that that plan has been in place for some time. There are probably roads on there that need to be reviewed and looked at, and that effort is going on currently. There's an active review of the corridor preservation plan being done by county in conjunction with the TPO. Again, that is looking at a future build-out scenario, so a 2045 threshold, it's actually looking at a 2070 build-out threshold. At this point, the county is not in a position to say what the results of that study will be. The entire network is being looked at, and roads being added or removed will have a bearing on capacities on other roads. on capacities on other roads. Cost will be a factor in that as well in the ultimate product that's recommended to the board. Just overall context for corridor preservation plan. In terms of the Lycie Road extension, this was on the corridor preservation plan, found that it was added in 2004. In 2006, the predecessor DRI expanded to be adjacent to the CSX tracks, and the Lycie Road extension was a requirement of that DRI that became the Waterset DRI to be constructed from where it's shown on the map here, over the CSX tracks to US 41. In 2014, that requirement did come off to build the overpass and the segment between CSX and 41. That was a function of the Waterset DRI being amended and its proportionate share being recalculated, consistent with a new formula that was put into state law. The result of that recalculation was that the financial contribution went down. And so what the county did was it took that pot of money, that was a reduced pot of money, and decided to put that money towards the Paseo Almar flyover. At that time, the corridor plan was not amended, but the dollars to build improvements were reduced, and so the decision was made to focus them on the Paseo Almar flyover. As it sits today, the project is required to, Waterset's required to build what is shown on there as Road A for that, as a two-lane road to the CSX right-of-way. It is accurate that that is the extent of the responsibility of the Waterset development. There is right-of-way preserved on the other side of the tracks between 41 and CSX, and the project that, actually, you can see on here on the north side of that, is constructing a segment of that as a two-lane road to their access point to the project to the north. So a lot of the information, I wanted to give that context for the information you had. There was, it was essentially a funding decision that resulted in the change in the requirement on Waterset. Again, that all said back to the first point of the plan update. That is an ongoing effort, expected to be finished sometime next year, and those results will come to the board with recommendations on additions or subtractions of road. And again, cost will be taken into account in feasibility of these road segments.
So if we, first of all, did the applicant, did the applicant contact our county department recently with regards to this?
The representatives of the applicant did reach out and meet with the county about potentially removing this road, and at that time, it was communicated that we weren't in a position to support that because there was, the whole corridor plan was being reviewed and updated. And I believe as a result of that, that the decision was made by the applicant to pursue this privately initiated amendment.
I see, without the other context and without the support of the staff here. And there's still, at some time, I mean, if this, if we were to approve this, we would forego any possibilities of the, what is under study and consideration now, which I think is desperately needed for the future, if not for now, in terms of making sure that we do not forego the very basics of a big grid and an east-west road across that area. But this would, this would not, you know, this would forego that possibility that you're looking at now.
If the board were to vote to take this off the corridor preservation plan, then that would, that would affect the update, that road segment would not be included as part of, as part of the study.
Thank you. And I just, I just think, I really object to it coming in this way, and I feel like there needs to be something, I was so alarmed about it. I feel like there needs to be something that somehow would, you know, get us this information as part of a process should this ever happen again in terms of, you know, I specifically asked staff, well, can you make sure that you educate us about, about this? Because we didn't have this other information at the time. So, you know, I would make a motion to deny, and I'd like to hear from others.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And just for the record, the planning commission staff recommended that it be found inconsistent. And although the planning commission, finally, after lengthy discussion and much back and forth and several votes back and forth, three votes back and forth, voted on a very close vote, certainly not unanimous, to find it consistent. It's not the same as recommending approval, that's they're finding it consistent if we want to, if we were to want to approve it. And I live in this neighborhood. I ride my bike on these streets. I've been advocating for much of my life now for the South Coast Greenway Trail that runs through the Waterset development in this area and connects with the Paseo Almar. And, you know, I'm really pleased that, to think that someday this is getting completed. But we really need for it all to be connected to everything else, and we need this connectivity that has been planned for forever and is still in our, our long-term corridor plan. We need to keep the option open, as has been agreed from the get-go with the developer, that someday we might get a connection here in between Paseo Almar and 19th. Could we see that Google Earth view one more time? Do you have that? Yes, there. Okay. Nope, back, the other one, the big one, the one that you just had. Yeah, there we go. Okay. Down at the bottom, you can see 19th Avenue running across, and it goes all the way from, you know, E.G. Simmons on the west over to Sun City and 301 on the east. That's a nice east-west corridor there, and we're putting bike lanes on that thanks to some state funding. And then if you go up 41, you can see we, I was just at the ribbon cutting for the Paseo Almar connection up there that goes also all the way to 301 and connects at Apollo Beach and everything. And the distance between Paseo Almar and 19th Avenue, according to the Google Maps, is something around three and three, three, three five, 3.3, three and a third mile-ish, over three miles certainly, with no connection. You know, that's a crying shame if we could have no more connection. Above Paseo Almar goes quite a bit till we get to Big Bend, you know? And then you've got this, you can see the Waterset Boulevard is the curvy one going kind of north-south. That's all going to come down to 19th and have the South Coast Greenway Trail connecting that. It needs to connect through here where the developer, Mr. Gormly, the developer's already building the piece on the other side of CSX, right? That other?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
From 41 to their project driveway.
Yeah, so, so that developer's already been, you know, they're in line with this corridor preservation plan. There is just no reason to let this developer out of this piece of what's been agreed to forever here. It would be a great connection. It would be a shame to lose that opportunity. I mean, do we want to have connectivity or not? This is the place. We should have connectivity, at least leave that option open for the long, long term of our, of our corridor preservation plan. The point of that corridor preservation plan is not to figure out who's going to build each little road and how much will it cost, and will CSX work with us here, there, or not? We just need to have this big plan preserving the option so that we don't, so that we don't lose those options. Later on, in the long, long term of this corridor preservation plan, we'll work out the details. Does it need a $12 million overpass? Who's going to pay for that? Or will CSX work with us for an at-grade option someday in the future? So I just am adamantly opposed to shutting off this option for connectivity. This is not even one where we have a bunch of people telling us they don't want the traffic. This is just, would let the developer build a couple more lots instead of preserving this right-of-way here. So I'm happy to second the motion not to transmit this.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and I, you know, I do see, actually, in the backup there on page three, that does have that double red line that you were looking for. I do see the potential for connecting this. But I did want to ask, and what I don't want to do is do what we may have locked ourselves into that we heard earlier. So if we were not to, for example, if we were to take out the corridor and we were to do that, you know, we limit our opportunities for the future. When we heard earlier about the CSX limitation of being able to do any, you know, crossings or whatever, what I, could you clarify what that limitation is when it addresses CSX that was referenced earlier, Mr. Gormly?
Commissioner, that is, the information that was provided there is the same information that was provided for the PRS that was, that was filed. At this point, we're still trying to reconcile the backup materials that were with that, with the, with the, the way they were described. So not able at this point to give you a, a response on what, there was a 2012 agreement and a 2013 amendment to that. What I was able to see, didn't have the county as a party, but we're looking at materials that were submitted along with that, including some stipulations from 2004 to fully understand what, what was agreed to. That all said, I know that CSX is not generally amenable to new at-grade crossings, and those are very challenging for us. So the statement that this, this would need to be or likely be a bridge to cross there, I believe is, is an accurate statement regardless of what the agreement said. But again, that piece, I think we need to look into that a bit further from.
Right, right. And I don't doubt that that is, that is a very true statement. CSX is very, very difficult to deal with, and they, they do find themselves in a situation where they negotiate in their best interest quite well. Let's just go there. But I would suggest that maybe if the condition does exist, they know where it is. So we might want to get, get an inquiry from them because if it exists, they're going to let you know and provide you with that proof. But that being said, I think, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, there's a reason a corridor preservation plan is in place in the first place. It doesn't mean we're going to build on it tomorrow, but it does mean that it's set aside for a reason. Do you, can you share with me what, based on where you are on the progress on the corridor preservation plan that update, that what you anticipate as, you know, without hurricanes and pandemics and other factors, what do you see as a timeline for being able to get that plan or that, that update a little closer to a year? You know, or, I mean, within the decade? I mean, within the, within the timeline that could be considered reasonable for being able to complete that? That's a big project. I'm not, I'm not, I don't mean to discount it at all. It's a big project. But can you give me an idea of what you anticipate being the, the outcome, or at least a reasonable modification of where we are with that plan?
In terms of when we'd have results prepared? So it will be in, into next year. We have some, some very preliminary information now that's being looked at and vetted. I would say in the first quarter of next year is a reasonably optimistic time for the, for the results to be finalized.
Okay, that, that's helpful, I think, because, you know, time is money, but also opportunities that are cut off when we eliminate, you know, you know how I feel about right-of-ways. So, you know, if we do that, and you also, my first two years, I was, what do you mean? There's no grid? So I am quite hesitant to take out, permanently take out a right-of-way before we have a strategy on why, how we might make sure that it's possible somewhere else. So I think I will that and ask for, I'll stop there and ask for a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to a three. This is a publicly initiated amendment to enhance the existing language within the comprehensive plan for the protection of gopher-tortoise habitat and other significant and essential wildlife habitats presented by, oh, I didn't name the item. It's HCCPA 2215, the comprehensive plan text amendment, and it's going to be presented by Sean College.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Sean College with your Hillsborough County Planning Commission staff. I'll go ahead and share my screen. This is comprehensive plan amendment 22-15 regarding gopher-tortoise habitat. Gopher tortoises are a very important species for the state of Florida. Their shelters provide shelter and different lifecycle habitat for hundreds of other species. It's a very important species. Some background on the plan amendment, this is publicly initiated. It was requested by the Board of County Commissioners on June 6 and further clarified on July 26. The Board of County Commissioners has asked its staff to do an accompanying Land Development Code amendments to enhance the protection of gopher-tortoise, another significant and essential wildlife habitat. These policies that are being proposed tonight would, would be implemented through the Land Development Code. What is being proposed, and this has not changed since your workshop earlier, is the same, same proposal. Three policies in the future land use element of the comprehensive plan are proposed to be revised. The first one, policy 13.2, would address the transfer of density on a site, maintaining density while still preserving significant and essential wildlife habitat. The second policy, 14.4, would address various techniques that could be utilized to enhance the protection of significant and essential wildlife habitats. And finally, policy 16.8 is being proposed to be revised to reflect that in the effort to protect significant wildlife habitat, densities, lot sizes, and the characters of the communities could change in an effort to, again, enhance the protection of significant and essential wildlife habitat, including that of gopher tortoises. That's the proposal. There were no objections from any government agencies with regard to this. There was some comments, and this, that was addressed, and it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. These are some of the policies. There's some significant policies already in your comprehensive plan, and upon consistency review, staff found that this proposals are consistent with your existing policies on habitat protection and listed species, specifically future land use policy 13.2, and environmental and sustainability section policy 3.2.6, and various other policies. Again, as I mentioned, there was some comment from the Environmental Lands Department, and these, these proposed policies are consistent and would further those comments. The planning commission did find that this is consistent. This plan amendment is consistent with the existing goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and forwards this provision. County Comprehensive Plan, and forwards this proposed plan amendment to you for your consideration. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I do not have anyone that signed up to speak to this item. Is there anyone anywhere that I should ask? Given that I hearing, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on this particular item, open it up for both our discussion and consider a motion.
I feel very passionately about this. I want to make a long, long, long speech.
All right, you're, you're, you're removed right now.
Second.
Move approval.
You mean to remove or to make a long speech?
Move approval.
Move approval. I think we're all, we're all wanting to protect our gopher tortoises. So with that, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Board, we're now at A4, HCCPA 2216B, a comprehensive plan text amendment. Publicly initiated amendment is for the removal of the potable water well field protection area map from the comprehensive plan and edits to corresponding definition. With that, we are seeing, our presenter for this item is Melissa Dickens. Is Ms. Dickens recognized?
Yes, Commissioners. Just wanted to let you know that Ms. Dickens was not, was not able to attend tonight, so I, the delegator, will be presenting the item tonight.
Well, excellent. Thank you.
And again, this is Hillsborough County's plan text amendment, CPA 2216B, the potable water well field protection area map. The map was developed in early, in the early 2000s and incorporated into the comprehensive plan around that time. The map does identify 500-foot radial setback from wells that serve a minimum number of year-round potable water users. In 2020, when the One Water Chapter was adopted, the map was moved and re-adopted with that chapter, so it now resides within the One Water Chapter. And additionally, the One Water Chapter does contain other general provisions related to the protection of groundwater, wellhead, wellheads, and wellfields. And then the definitions section provides the purpose and regulation and where, where the map is found and the regulations to that. Again, this is a publicly initiated plan amendment. The purpose is to remove the map from the comprehensive plan and edit the corresponding definition, excuse me, but does not remove or alter the regulation. And the reason for that is due to the frequency of data changes and map scale. County staff report that continually amending the map within the comprehensive plan has become ineffective. In addition, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection does maintain a, and routinely update a database, database with relevant wells and buffer areas at the state level. So the proposed changes are as follows. First is to remove the potable water well field protection map as seen on the slide, and to modify the definition with, found in the definitions section of the comprehensive plan, to remove the location of the map that currently found being in the comprehensive plan, removing that portion, and then redirecting the user to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection as stated in the proposed language there on the slide. We did not receive any objections, and we did receive comments from Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the Hillsborough County Environmental Protection Commission, and Hillsborough County staff as well. And then for consistency criteria, the policies found on the slide relate to, were used for the consistency finding of the, of the proposed amendment. Ladies and gentlemen, the recommendation is the planning commission found HCCP 2216B consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan on 8 August at its public, public meeting, and recommend adoption to the Board of County Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes my presentation. Myself and county staff are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Garrick. I appreciate that. This is a public hearing. I do not have anyone signed up to speak to this particular item. Is there anyone that's present at Saunders?
No one present at Saunders.
Okay, excellent. Then I'll close the hearing, open it up for both board discussion, and consider a vote, motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Excellent. We have a motion to approve, a second by, I'm sorry, with Commissioner White, is second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
And I would like to make a note, the comments that were made at the previous item were all in jest in case the minute taker is going, what? Just in case. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to, to consider a resolution for the transmittal of CPA 2215 and CPA 2216B for state review.
So moved?
We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith. Hearing no further discussion, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Okay, we're moving along here. We are at the section of our meeting to, to address the small-scale plan amendments and related major modification to be, to a plan development zoning. The item is B1A, HCCPA 2126, the future land use map change at Valrico and State Road 60. And I would, I'm not sure who's doing this plan amendment, so. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to ask to be recognized after the comp plan amendment is introduced before we get to the rezoning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, you're very good to get my attention, so thank you very much. Okay, with that, Planning Commission, who's?
The presenter will be Ms. Carla Yanos.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Yanos. Look forward to hearing from you.
Good afternoon. Carla Yanos with Planning Commission staff. Can you hear me okay? Is the audio fine?
I believe we all can hear you. Go right ahead.
Perfect. So this is a privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan amendment 2126.
A little more volume wouldn't hurt.
Okay, let me see.
Carla, this is HTV. If you need any assistance, just let us know.
Yes, please, I do.
If you want to increase your audio, just go to the bottom left button. There should be a drop down arrow next to the microphone symbol on the bottom left.
Down here?
Yeah, in the program, the WebEx program you're using, there should be a button on the bottom left.
She's with the county.
Okay, hold on one second. Let me stop sharing because it, there it goes.
Yep, on the bottom left. You see where your microphone is?
Yes.
Okay, there's a drop down arrow you can click on.
Correct.
And then go to audio settings near the bottom.
Correct.
And then there should be some levels there you can adjust, the little line there, the micro, it should say microphone.
It's automatically already on the highest volume.
Okay. You see where it says automatically adjust volume?
Yes.
Keep that unchecked.
Unchecked, okay.
And then if your volume is turned all the way up, you should be good to go from here. You might need to speak a little louder if you are low.
Okay, is that a little bit better? I brought the, the laptop closer to my face.
A little closer works great. Go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me share again. Can you see my screen? Perfect.
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan amendment 2126, Valrico Road and State Route 60. This plan amendment was originally part of the October 2021 cycle. This case was instructed by the Board of County Commissioners to have a concurrent rezoning application at the January 13, 2022 public hearing. The rezoning application for CPA 2126 is major modification 220862. This went before the zoning hearing master on July 25, 2022. Today's public hearing, we're going to consider the adoption or denial of the comprehensive plan map amendment for 2126 and the concurrent rezoning application for major modification 22-0862. After the CPA presentation, we'll give some time for the commissioners to comment, and then we'll hop on over to the rezoning presentations. The subject property is about 12.8 acres. It's located southeast of Valrico Road and State Route 60 intersection. The property is within the urban service area, and it's not located within the limits of a community plan. The project is in the middle of the October 2021 plan amendment cycle. Again, this request is a privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, and it's to change the future land use designation from residential nine to residential 20. This property is surrounded by a variety of uses. On the north and south side of State Route 60 is retail and personal services. So if you look on your screen, I'll be able to point with my mouse. Hopefully you can see it. Now, there is a public shopping plaza to the southwest corner of Valrico Road and State Route 60, which is in this area. Then the Brandon Boulevard Shops Plaza is located at the northwest corner. And within the vicinity of the property, there are standalone non-residential uses such as like a CVS, a Taco Bell, Valrico Diner, a car wash, and two gas stations and a convenience store. Now, just south of the property is also multifamily residential. It's named Oak Valley, and also we have the Valrico Forest Single Family Residential subdivision, which is down to the south. So this is a multifamily subdivision, and this is a single family down here. Here, we have a picture of the direct frontage on State Route 60. This is the first entrance to the property, and it actually shares a, a driveway access with a Taco Bell. And you probably see on the other side of that Taco Bell, you'll see a Burger King, but I believe they have their own access. Now, here is a little bit of a wider view of the actual entrance, and we're looking straight on to State Route 60. And north of that, you'll see the entrance to the Mobile Home Park, and there's a church nearby, and there's a few standalone residential uses that are kind of tucked away from, from the road. Here we have a picture of the sidewalk, and we're looking east on State Route 60. You can see that there's a very large ditch and wide sidewalks, so there is plenty of pedestrian room. And here we see a picture of the second entrance of the property. It's right off of State Route 60. This, this entrance is unimproved. I'm not sure if they'll have to change this at the rezoning level or not, but we'll, we'll, we'll look at it again as the permitting process comes through. Now, this is the middle of the property. The property is currently vacant, unimproved. There are, to the, to the side of the property, you'll see some current storage of like U-Hauls, but that's probably temporary, and they're seeking to obviously propose a different use. So the future land use, the current future land use of the property is residential nine, and the residential nine category allows you a standard density of nine dwelling units to the acre and 0.5 FAR. Now, the proposed future land use is residential 20, so will allow you 20 dwelling units an acre or 0.75 FAR. The retail is limited to 0.35 FAR. Now, the property is surrounded by residential nine future land use. However, to the north is residential six, and then to the south is residential four, and to the west you see office commercial 20. Now, there is no currently residential 20 within proximity to the site, however, the office commercial 20 does allow a similar density and intensity. So these are the maximum residential and non-residential impacts. The residential nine would produce 115 dwelling units, roughly 279,000 square feet of non-residential use. The residential 20 would allow for a maximum of 256 dwelling units and 418,000 square feet of non-residential. There is a limited square footage for retail, and that's approximately 195,000 square feet. Both districts allow the same type of uses. The difference is the, the increase in density and intensity. Staff has reviewed and has found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. Overall, the request is located in an urban service area. It is centrally located with frontage on an arterial and collector road. It is consistent with the surrounding uses, and it actually provides for a decent transition between the commercial off of State Route 60 and to the residential that's located to the south. The planning commission vote, voted seven to zero on January 10, 2022, and they are recommending that HCCPA 2126 be found consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and recommends forwarding this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. I will gladly answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. We have three minutes set aside per applicant representative for this particular item. Is the applicant present? I have several people representative as applicant on a, on a sign up sheet. I'm not sure how many of them are still here, but it looks like, based on my list, I have one, two, three, four, five listed as an applicant. There, it appears as though there may be two others, but is the applicant present that wants to take the lead on this?
Elise Batzel with Sterns Weaver. Everyone on your list, this, I believe we have seven, they're here in our conference room and prepared to speak. But again, if you'll allow me to speak on behalf of all of them, I can wrap up much quicker and save you time this evening.
So can you please list the seven that you have available?
Absolutely. Carlos Yepes, Christian Yepes, Suzanne Walker, David Smith, Nicole Nougabauer, Savannah Hancock, and Ree, what's her?
Yur.
Yuger.
Yur.
That might be eight, but.
Okay.
And our transportation consultant, Steve Henry, has also signed up, I believe. We don't need all that time, Madam Chair.
Okay, so do you want 24 minutes or 21 minutes?
We will be done before 21 minutes. So if you give us 21, I will, I will make sure to be efficient.
Thank you for your mercy. I appreciate it. Go right ahead.
With that, Elise Batzel with Sterns Weaver Miller. If I may share my screen, let me know when that comes up. Can you see that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So we're here with the applicant team, all of those folks that I just mentioned to you. As you may recall, this matter came before you for a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning, and I believe it was Commissioner White who actually suggested that we remand this, and I'm sorry, not remand this, but that we hear them together for both a joint comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning, because we did have neighborhood opposition. And the thought was, let's make sure that our site plan actually takes some of the existing residential neighborhood into consideration. So the request tonight is to amend the comprehensive plan, which would have 12.8 acres on this area generally southwest of the intersection of State Route 60 and Valrico. We've talked about this many times before, but you always come to us and say we need more housing units, that we're in a desperate crisis. Please bring us housing units in the urban service area. Again, this is one of those sites that we have identified within the urban service area, along State Route 60, surrounded by commercial development that is a prime spot for new infill multifamily projects. This project is not located in the Brandon community plan. If you look at this map here, currently, the property has a U-Haul operation along on State Route 60. Directly to the south of this property is an existing townhome project. So all along the southern boundary where you see is the Oak Valley townhomes. Part of what we've submitted to the record, and I'll go into more detail, are, is a petition of support from of support from multiple property owners that live directly adjacent to the site. Now, your staff report talks about this area, and specifically said that this State Road 60 corridor is a major commercial corridor, supporting a mixture of retail, commercial, industrial, and here's what's important, high-density residential infill. So before we discuss the specific project, I wanted to spend a moment on the larger area. You've seen this before, but this project is sandwiched between an area to the east and west in this corridor that have OC 20 as a future land use designation, and which already has existing commercial development to support the residential uses, right? We're always looking for areas for live, work, and play. Can you walk to the grocery store? Can you walk across the street to get, you know, something from the Taco Bell or the McDonald's? This is the prime spot. It's really important, particularly since the board asked us to come back and hear both of these together, that I give you a little bit of zoning background. The current zoning on the property was approved in 2003 for 106,000-plus square feet of non-residential commercial development. So the applicant, which you'll hear in the next hearing, has submitted a rezoning to eliminate 103,000-plus square feet of those non-residential entitlements. We're going to maintain the little Taco Bell that already exists, and we're going to replace the non-residential entitlements with 256 multifamily units. You'll hear during the rezoning that this is also a significant reduction in traffic. Now, when the comprehensive plan amendment that was to the east came before you, there were two issues that everyone was concerned about, and that was access on the local road and the height. And I don't want to get into too much detail on this now, but I do want to mention it, and that is that the applicant has looked at this plan and has heard those concerns, and what you will hear during the rezoning is that they are willing to have emergency access only, just like the residents want, on the local road, and they're also willing to bring all of the buildings down to four stories. So we look forward to, sorry, three stories, not four. Reduce the one building from four to three. Thank you, I misspoke. So this is really important, too, because this is the existing site plan. You know, we never want to look at a property in a bubble. This is not vacant land. This is currently entitled to allow a lot, 106,000 square feet of commercial development. And if you look at this existing site plan, look at the red jagged line on the bottom. That's how close the existing commercial development could locate under the existing approvals to those townhomes to the east, which directly above the property. And the buffer on this existing site plan is only 20 feet. So our proposed amendment to step back a little bit and get more global about the comprehensive plan, RES 9 allows residential at nine dwelling units per acre, but it also allows urban-scale neighborhood commercial, which you've seen on the site plan, office uses, multipurpose project, and mixed-use developments, which is what we're proposing. What we're really asking you to do, changing this to RES 20, is to reduce the commercial entitlements, but increase the residential entitlements on the property. As you already know, particularly the commissioners who live out in this area, Brandon is expected to grow exponentially, 14,685 new residents by the year 2045. That is 3.6% of the overall growth for the entire county. And this just zooms in. I think this, you know, I'm a visual person, and this graphic for me was really important. The area in blue is the area of the comprehensive plan amendment. You can see everything around it, and just to quickly look, directly across the street is a pharmacy, a Dunkin' Donuts. There's a diner, a Walgreens, a McDonald's, a Shell. Taco Bell that you see there is actually incorporated into the PD plan, but doesn't need the comp plan amendment. There's a car wash. And let's go east across Valrico Road. There is a public anchored grocery shopping center. There's a Ross, I'm sorry, West, my directions. Don't know how I do land development, and I don't know my directions. There's a Ross, there's an Applebee's. The point is, this is an active commercial corridor, not just on this side, but on the opposite side. So again, the perfect way to transition from that commercial development that you see along Interstate, State Route 60, back to the existing residential is this transition use of multifamily, and it also provides a great need for housing. Just to quickly touch on transit and mobility, the closest heart bus route is available at Route 46, and this is on the Transit Development Plan as the bus transit route 10-year unfunded plan. This is also a great future use, because there's a potential light rail going. There's an old CSX rail line there, so if we're thinking about connectivity and we're thinking about future rail lines servicing residential, you want residents to live close to these areas. This area is also already served by a number of existing sidewalks, so having residents live in the area and being able to walk to all of these commercial existing developments is very important. The site at this point is not appropriate from a planning perspective for low densities and intensities, or even single-family residential. It is ideal for the medium and higher densities and intensities. There's, as we said, many groceries, gas stations, all within walking distance, and it's surrounded by several non-residential CG zonings and plan developments. Your professional staff has recommended approval. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. We did receive a number of letters of support for this comprehensive plan amendment. Many of the employees you see listed here desperately need housing in the area for their employees. We have letters from Walmart, Home Depot, Esporta, Brandon Honda, Venture Medical, and we've already mentioned that the residents that live directly adjacent to the south, the townhome residents, we met with them, and many of them have signed a petition. They are so happy that there isn't going to be a big commercial development in their backyard, that there's going to be a compatible development that is appropriately transitioned with appropriate buffers. This is in line with the county's vision plan for Brandon, and again, will allow much-needed residential in the area. We are all here for questions, and hopefully we save some time this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other applicant team members that wish to speak to this matter?
No, ma'am, I tried to speak for everyone.
Okay, great. That's excellent. This is a public hearing. It does appear as though there are some other citizens that have signed up to speak at this point, so I'm going to go through all the names, and you can say that there are citizens that wish to speak to this versus your applicant team, because the names didn't quite match up there. The first name I have on the list is Grace McComas, is attending virtually, listed as in opposition. Is Ms. McComas available?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please, you may proceed. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm opposed to using comprehensive plan amendment changes to change a long-term plan to control development and urban sprawl in place until 2025, and for this spot zoning. Requesting a higher density than any other residential property in the area or the future land use plan allows, the future land use plan map that had originally said R9, so stating R20 every time is only if this amendment gets changed. This property has already received a PD, which had not been utilized from 2003, which was more in keeping the compatible density to the surrounding area. The applicant even shown this point on a chart in the major mod request. However, even if residents would prefer residential units rather than shopping, et cetera, three- and four-story buildings are not compatible to the area. R20 is not compatible to the area. Even the commercial that was just listed is not three or four stories. This CPA change, or major mod, whichever it's going to be, has no redeeming value to the county, neighbors, traffic, or appearance in the area. As I've repeatedly commented on these issues of CPA changes for spot zoning, what happens in any part of the unincorporated county affects all of us. Approving these changes of future land uses is dangerously supporting destruction of our unincorporated county and our comprehensive plan. Thank you for the opportunity.
The next speaker I have signed up to speak is Charles Bothy.
Yes, Charles, can you hear us? Looks like you're muted.
Yeah, we're unable to hear you, sir. Yep.
Can you hear me now?
We can. There you are.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not very good with these electrical.
You're doing fine. You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Charles Bothy, and I live at 2303 Highway 60, which is just next, just east of the project that they're wanting to put in now. I've lived there for 40 years. My neighbor next to me, Don Byansky, his family has been there for 70 years. We realize that there's going to be progress and that you need housing for people, but when they changed the zoning to R9, we thought that was compatible with the neighborhood. I mean, and now what they're wanting to do is change it to R20, which is going to make it three times as many people there. That's just, I just, I can't understand why it has to be that much. I'd also like to say that Highway 60 is a major evacuation route, and I've lived there 40 years. The road there is a bottleneck. It goes from eight lanes to six lanes at Valrico Road, and then in front of my house, which is halfway between Valrico Road and Miller Road, it goes to four lanes, and it's a dangerous situation. I know they say that you can walk to the different stores. If you try and walk across Highway 60, you're taking your life in your hands, and I'm just being truthful about that. So I understand there's going to be progress. I understand you have to have places for people to live, but it's not consistent with our neighborhood there to have three- and four-story apartment buildings. We thought it was going to be townhomes, where people own their own homes, and not just rental apartments. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker signed up to speak is, I believe, Sharon Bass.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity. Karen Bass, I am counsel for Mr. Chuck Bothy. I have my office at 9385 North 56th Street in Temple Terrace, Florida. The reason I'd like to address the commission tonight is simply to point out that this particular proposed comprehensive plan amendment really does lie in the face of a couple of the objective standards for urban service development, in our opinion, and most importantly, the impacts that it has on the existing homeowners in that area, on their property, on their property values, on the pollution that's going to be increased in that area. As you could see from the maps, it was very clear that there's a lot of still agricultural use in this area. Most of this area is single-family dwelling and townhomes, even far to the south. So by creating this infill of high residential, both right off of 60 and then another planned development right on the other side on Miller Road, you're really creating a substantial change in the character of this neighborhood, which truly, in our opinion, does not follow the policies that are stated in an urban service development area. That's simply where we're at. That's my comments. Thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker I have signed up to speak is Elizabeth Belcher.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Belcher. I live at 406 South Miller Road. The major issue that we're concerned with is infrastructure, putting the cart before the horse. Again, a high-density project and the area, the roads, the entrances and exits of the public plaza, the Valrico Commons, is not ready for this. Highway 60 is not ready for this high-density project. This is the only project, if approved, will be RES 20. They keep comparing it to the Plaza OC 20. That's a commercial area. It does not have dwellings, and it's an eyesore. We talk about walking to the grocery store. Most of us have cars. We don't walk. The sidewalk infrastructure that she showed in the picture, if you look in front of Windexy, it is damaged. It has never been maintained because of trees. It's uprooted, and I have pictures. I included it in my opposition letter. The height, they reduced it to three stories. That's a little bit better, but still, most of the apartments and townhouses are only two stories here around us. The apartments that are the closest to us are at Valrico Station, and they do not exceed three stories. They're two to three stories. This project is not consistent with our area. We're a single family. Our roads cannot support it. We have a major infrastructure issue in the state of Florida, and adding growth and people before our infrastructure is stressing the community. We're going to be trapped in traffic, trapped. These are developers who are somewhere else. We, as a community, drive this every single day. Every day, I walk it and drive it. The traffic is atrocious, and the entrance for the common Valrico Plaza, where Publix is, and the car wash, and the gas station, they put cones up. People violate that. We need better infrastructure. We need better roads to support the density. We're okay with growth, but this is more than double what they asked for in 2003. So I strongly oppose it. Do better. Do better for the community. Do better for us, our families who live here. Please, we're begging you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, I believe, may be, well, actually, I have two names that I'm unsure about, Savannah Hancock and/or Suzanne Walker. Are either of them present?
Both of those speakers are with the applicant, Madam Chair.
They are with the applicant. Okay, okay. I think I have covered everyone that signed up to speak. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak? Hearing none. We will offer any rebuttal?
Yes. Sorry, let me get on video. Elise Batzel, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. So a lot of the comments that we heard related to plan development issues, site plan issues, traffic issues, infrastructure issues, we're going to provide a lot of additional testimony on that, but I would like Steve Henry very quickly just to pop on and reiterate the significant decrease in traffic that this project would have versus the commercial entitlements that are there today. Steve, if you would, just a moment. Are you on, Steve? There we go.
Good evening. Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates. And just real briefly, and we'll go through the graphics and everything else that we've got during the zoning, but just to give you an idea of the magnitude, currently today, as indicated, the property is currently zoned for 106,000 square feet of commercial. That would generate about 6,000 daily trips. This proposal that's before you tonight would be about 1,700 daily trips. In the AM peak hour, the current would be about 224, we'd be about 157. And in the PM peak hour, the existing or current approved would be 559, ours would be 137. So there's a significant decrease in traffic over what could be built there, and what's approved to be built there today.
Thank you, Steve. And just to address a couple of the other concerns, if I can just share my screen and remind folks. This is not an agricultural area. This is State Route 60. This is a existing high-yield commercial corridor. There was a comment about potentially building There was a comment about potentially building townhomes there. Townhomes on State Route 60 would be completely inappropriate. As you heard in your profession, from the planning report, this is more appropriate for medium-to-high-density residential because of its location, because of its location on this corridor. If this is not the ideal place for an infill multifamily project, please let us know what you're looking for, because we have heard over and over that you need housing and that you need it inside the urban service area, and you need it close to existing jobs and services. This checks all of the boxes. We will, that's the end of our rebuttal. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Normally, we would move on to the major modification in the zoning hearing. However, I do see I have a few folks in the queue. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We recently remanded Major Mod 22-0689. To refresh your memory, that was the proposed multifamily development at Miller and 60. And that has an accompanying comp plan amendment as well. I know that you all know that the comp plan amendment considerations are legislative considerations, and the rezonings are quasi-judicial hearings. Now, the facts surrounding the rezoning applications will undoubtedly have different facts. But I believe that the legislative decisions here are going to be very similar. If you think back to that map, although there are two different projects, you would have apartments that would span continuously from Valrico to Miller, roughly fronting State Road 60. So because the legislative considerations would be so similar, I'm going to make a motion to continue this to the December 15 public hearing. That's the public hearing where the one at Miller and 60 is going to be landing. And I've been advised by staff that if that motion is seconded and passes, that we won't hear the presentation or arguments on the rezoning tonight. It would just follow the comp plan amendment right along to December 15.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a second. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes. I'll just say this. I want, I want the board to be thinking about this. And I think it's significant. Just in terms of this, if you could just, again, put up the map that has the zoning around, surrounding what you're trying to change here. No, not that one. The other one with the colors. I don't know, I should, it's in our backup under I 4, I point 4, let's see, it says on the backup here, page 4 of 101. We saw it already, I think.
Are you referring to staff or to the applicant?
Well, staff.
Okay. Let me share my screen.
And I'm always, I always want a bigger map, quite honestly, than the one I ever have, because I think we rarely can understand the context for these things. And if you do go just a tad to the east of this, this is where, I believe, the industrial energy park, 300 or 3,000 acres, that is basically, you know, pretty much rural lands. And so I know that there's this idea that this is like some massive urban area, but I really, I feel like if you went out there, you would have a different feel from what it is. Now, if you look at this map, which, again, doesn't go out to the east, so we can't really see the context of it, but we have that one office commercial area. But other than that, when you look at the others, you see a big area of Res 4. These colors are so similar with the yellows. But the Res 4, the Res 6, the Res 9, which people thought was kind of a big deal when they did it and let that go and agreed to it. And again, we are increasing densities already by having the Res 9. We're going from zero to Res 9. So we have a lot of intensity going out there. We also have, by the way, that is, to ask for the Res 20, is a 100% increase, more than a 100% increase, from Res 9 to Res 20. I just want to, I just think we need to think about that. But my final point is this, and I don't know how the process ever changes to be this, but I, first of all, I'm not concerned about getting more housing. I would like more multifamily housing opportunities in Hillsborough County, but more housing in general, I'll just strike, I'll just say from the start, is not my concern. We are putting down houses at a blistering pace like no other. I am concerned about our affordable housing, our providing of affordable housing. And I'll say this, whenever we just approve increases in density like this, and to me, this isn't necessarily a worthy area to do that at this pace, but when we do it, we forego the possibility of, the applicants are not going to be coming back. No wonder our mixed-use and our affordable housing bonuses aren't used, because they're not going to be used if we just grant it this way without, you know, that's why, that's one reason why those are never looked at, I think, seven times in five years or something like that, as an avenue for doing this. I do have problems still with the way the affordable housing thing, proposed, new proposal is drawn up. But I will say this, if we don't start, if we don't start looking at options like this, and I don't think this is one where I'm burning to put in more density, I'm not even, I have very big hesitations about that, because I think nine, you know, Res 9 adds something there. And I will concur to, the very first picture I saw, I'm sure they'll want to remove it now, but the very first picture was a sidewalk, and they said sidewalks are here, and I noticed a pole up in the middle of the sidewalk, right there, you know? Didn't, didn't look very desirous to me. But I'll just say that I, you know, I have very big hesitancies about this. I think the intensity in this area is too much. But if we are going to, I don't know, because we have a process where we go, give the future comp plan, and then later on comes in the rezoning, right? So we, if, as long as we keep giving densities on just approving it, just out there with no, no expectation of any affordable housing units or mixed-use, which I also, you know, I think that is incredibly important, kind of, I mean, I would love to see some of these places, but actually, out here is a little far out there. I kind of, I'll just say instinctively, I'm with you, Commissioner White, where you've said for years about kind of tapering off as you come to the edges of the urban service area. And they, and I know there was lots made here about transportation and whatever. Again, I just don't even know about where that will be. And I, right now, we do have a bus right, kind of that spot is the end of the route, and it is hourly, like 19 out of 30 of our routes, you know? That isn't, you know, the kind of service that provides for a lot of help for these residents. But, and I, and God knows, I would want that to change, but we'll have to see about that. But I just wanted to share all these thoughts with you. I would like it put off. I would, you know, I'm wondering if the developers might consider that they could, I think our affordable housing density bonuses are really not, I have issues with them, but if, as long as we're going to just give density away, and that's what I feel like we're doing, and I don't feel like this is necessarily the ideal place for that density, in my mind, just saying. I think the argument could be made, as it has been, by this developer. But I'll just put in those, my thoughts about this in particular, and I'm, you know, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see this continued. And I just wanted to share those thoughts with the applicant and with the board, because I want our board, I don't know, to me, it's like, okay, first we, you know, some kind of decision tree where we go first, are we desperate to have this kind of density here? Okay? If we are, maybe we should just approve it outright. If we're not, maybe we should think, okay, you know, is there some land, mixed-use or affordable housing opportunities in here? And if so, this is the place where we have to do it. But then we have our future land use separated from our rezoning where that comes in. I don't know how we resolve that, but I feel certain that that's a lot of the reason that this isn't exercised and we're not getting that resolved. And me, I'm all about getting more affordable housing, not just housing, more affordable housing. And this, you know, doesn't look like the answer that I would like for that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. Respectfully, I disagree with you, and I disagree with continuing this, and I'll tell you why. We are constantly making difficult decisions with competing problems that we are trying to solve. And where I disagree with you, Commissioner Kemp, is that I don't think we just have a shortage of affordable housing. I think we have a shortage of housing across the board. And a lot of times, we reject things that come here because they're in the rural service area, and our comp plan is very clear about only 20% of the new development being outside of the urban service area. Sometimes we've rejected things because they're in the coastal high-hazard area. As we, as we look at this, we have staff approval, we have Planning Commission approval, and we have a proposal that clearly is going to result in less traffic than what is already entitled there now, that would be much more, I think, intrusive to the neighborhood than what's being proposed. And I think at some point, you know, we have to stick with what we say, which is that we're going to encourage new housing development inside the urban service area along major transit corridors, and that's what this is. And honestly, the applicant asked the question, if not this, what? And I don't know how, I don't know how we would answer that if we deny this. I think, or continue it. The other problem I have with continuing it is that it sounds like the idea of doing that is to make this one and the one right down the road at Miller somewhat dependent on one another. And I don't think that we are allowed to do that. I think we have to take these on an individual case-by-case basis. I don't think the idea of hearing them both on the same night and picking one over the other or making them dependent on one another, that seems to me to be way outside of the way that we normally try to deal with these, which is individually. So I'm just, I'm not comfortable with it. I think that the applicant made their case as to why this is appropriate, and given our housing crisis, I just am hard-pressed to say no to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. If my motion passes, and this is deferred to December 15, I completely agree on the rezoning side, that one should not be dependent on the other. But I think the policy decisions, though, on the comp plan amendment side are just so similar. Look, if on December 15, the board decides legislatively that it's okay with the two comp plan amendments, then the rezonings move forward and they're heard separately. But I do think on the policy side, that there are similar enough policy decisions that, you know, all I'm asking is to just get these married up, get them on the agenda for the same night, and the board is going to make the decision that it's going to make on that night.
Commissioner Smith? So, the other one that's coming December 15 is to the east of this, on the south side of 60, it goes all the way to Miller. And, you know, and that's going to be asking for a Res 20 as well. And we'll see if there's, if it's all residential or it's all commercial with those zonings that come with it. I agree, because I, you know, I do have a little trouble saying, okay, well, we're just going to put, you know, this island of Res 20 and a bunch of Res 9. That's really, you know, our constitutional comp plan should be looking at these in bigger pictures. We should be making a decision, is this an area we want to start putting more density of, to the extent of Res 20? Or do we want to leave it all Res 9 instead of doing a little bit now, and then by December, we're like, well, you already got this, you might as well put this, instead of looking at it all in one big thing? I have said to the planners at the Planning Commission before that I wish we could start, you know, really looking at some of these areas in an update to the future land use map and decide, is this where we want it? I do feel the force of the thinking that if we just, and I've said it before myself with regard to transfer of development rights, if we're just sitting here giving away density like candy, who's ever going to need to transfer development from the rural area to an urban area? Who's ever going to take advantage of affordable housing density bonus to do this? I agree. I would like this a lot more if it had affordable housing coming with it. So I'm fine to support the motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor. I'm sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place. I need the housing desperately, but I also need affordable housing desperately. And I know that with our housing element, if we ever get there this evening, and when we talk about our affordable housing density bonuses, it might not take as much of a change because you would get the density and you'd get the housing. So, and that's what we desperately need. So I'm willing to support the motion, but I would like to see these two items come together. I mean, that's, I think this, in this particular situation, the impact to the overall area, I think needs to have some consistency. And so I think bringing them back together in December might make the best sense. Commissioner Kemp?
And I think Commissioner Smith's points are well-taken, because what we do, when we do this, is like spot zoning instead of comprehensive planning by doing this. And it's initiated, I understand, by the developers, but we, and, you know, they said at the beginning, there's no community plan governing this. So there hasn't been any, like, comprehensive thought about doing this or moving it. And I do regret that we do everything this way, and I do consider this spot zoning and not comprehensive thoughtful land use planning. And so that's another point that I think was well-taken with Commissioner Smith's points.
Okay. Seeing no further comments, please indicate your vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
No.
Sorry, can you repeat that, sir?
No.
Thank you. Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Cohen? Commissioner Cohen voted no.
Okay. So does that take us into the major mod or not? Where does that leave us?
I believe the motion was to continue both items.
Both items together.
December 15th at 6:00 p.m.
Yes.
You guys are making my day. Okay. With that, we will move on to the small-scale plan amendment adoption of B2, which is HCCPA 2206, a future land use map amendment at Williams Road and Sly Avenue. And with that, I'm seeing that Carla Yanos is gonna do that presentation as well. Thank you, from the Planning Commission.
Good evening. Carla Yanos with Planning Commission staff. This is a privately initiated comprehensive plan map amendment for 22-06, Williams Road and Sly Avenue in the unincorporated Hillsborough County. The subject property is approximately 10.03 acres in the rural service area and in the Thornton Tassasa Community Plan. This plan amendment was originally part of the January cycle. However, the applicant since then has revised their request twice, and it is now part of the July 2022 cycle, and it's located in the middle of the 2022 cycle. The subject property is located at 7100 Williams Road and Sefner. It's east of Interstate 75 and Williams Road and north of Interstate 4, Circle South Road and Sly Avenue East. The applicant is currently requesting a comprehensive plan map amendment from residential 1 to residential 2. And the subject property is currently vacant. It's located where residential and agricultural are predominant uses. However, there are, there are a few other uses nearby, such as two schools, two churches, a cemetery is also within proximity, and the Tampa Executive Airport is located west of Interstate 75. It's approximately half a mile away. And there's more intense uses found along County Road 579, such as a wastewater treatment facility, manufacturing, warehouse, and distribution, dealerships, and retail. Those uses are about three quarters of a mile away, and they are located at a major intersection. And these are the uses that I'm pointing to with, with my mouse. So that's 579, and then here's the Tampa Executive Airport. So this picture shows the front entrance of the property. The next picture that I'm gonna show you actually is gonna show the middle of, just past these gates. So let me show you that. And that's what, and these pictures were taken back in March. We haven't been back out there, so we don't know if this, the materials that are stored outside are still there. Now, here we're standing at the entrance again, and we're gonna be facing west, meaning just across the street. And as you can see, there's an existing road, which the applicant will need to take into consideration at the time of site plan development. And the next two pictures will show the view at the front entrance of the property facing Williams Road, looking to the left and to the right. So here's a view to the southwest, which is the left, and here's a picture facing north or to the right. So what you see. The property has an adopted future land use of residential 1, which allows farms, ranches, residential uses, rural scale, neighborhood, commercial uses, and other non-residential uses that meet locational criteria. The proposed future land use residential 2, it does allow residential, suburban scale neighborhood, commercial, and other non-residential uses also subject to locational criteria. The subject property is surrounded by a sea of residential 1 future land use category. Residential 4 can be found to the northwest of the property, and it's approximately three quarters of a mile away in this area. And then you can also see the community mixed use 12 and the suburban mixed use 6, which is also about three quarters of a mile away, and it's closer to the Interstate 4. So these are the potential impacts with the proposed amendment. The residential 1 future land use category, again, is a rural land use category. It allows a standard density of one dwelling unit an acre, or 0.25 FAR, and that will allow the property approximately 10 dwelling units and 109,000 square feet of non-residential use. Under the proposed residential 2, it allows you two dwelling units an acre and approximately 0.25 FAR. Again, the non-residential from rez 1 to rez 2 does not change, however, there is an increase in density in the rural area. Now, staff has reviewed this request for consistency with the comprehensive plan amendment, and has found the request inconsistent with the food policies and the Thornton Tassasa Community Plan. The subject site is not consistent with the rural service area, which is an area planned to remain in long-term agriculture, large lot residential development. The proposed rez 2 future land use category increases the residential density in this, in this area, which is not compatible with the intent of the rural service area. It increases residential, residential density, and it could set precedent for future amendments. And it's just going to proliferate the area with an urban setting, which is, it was not originally intended for. The proposed rez 2 is not consistent with the neighborhood community development and community design component food policies. Surrounding the property is mostly agricultural and single-family uses. To the north, northwest, northeast, west, and east is agricultural uses on large lots. To the south is single-family residential on one acre and a half lots. To the southeast are public quasi-public uses. So really, Planning Commission staff has found this inconsistent with the food policies. And currently, Planning Commission recommends that HCCPA 22-06 be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Please note that the Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this on October 10th, and they voted eight to zero for, to recommend a denial or inconsistency with the plan. And I will gladly stand if you have any questions.
Ms. Yanos, could you repeat the Planning Commission vote? I could not. I, it garbled a little bit.
Planning Commission vote was eight to zero for an inconsistent.
Inconsistent, okay. That's what I couldn't, I couldn't discern what you were saying. Thank you so very much for your presentation. I appreciate it. Is the applicant present?
Madam Chair, we do have someone here at Saunders.
Okay. Is it related to this item?
It's the applicant.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioner. According to my time, it's my bedtime, so I just want to make it quick for you. My name is Hong Mai.
I truly appreciate that concept and that statement, so we will get through.
Yeah, we will get through it. My name is Hong Mai, 14031 Oakdale Mayberry, Tampa 33618, representing the applicant. Let me, let me go, let me go to the LMO here, and first of all, I respectfully disagree with the Planning Commission finding inconsistent, and then I will tell you how I can make that argument. If you look on the LMO, that the property highlight on the east side of William Road, the Planning Commission failed to, basically talking about the overall area. I think about a year and a half ago, the Commission, you know, approved the Moto Anclay, which immediately east of the Tampa Executive Airport, and also the Tampa Executive Airport have a master plan to expand it. Now, the east side Avenue is on the south side, is the major collector road, and then, you know, William Road is a major, you know, collector road, you know, as well. The, the next slide I'm gonna show you is that December 10 to December 15, 2017, the county commission, commissioned to the ULI, you know, study whereby they look at, you know, the I-4 corridor and the Area 1 and the Area 2, that's what, you know, they're looking at. The next slide will show you that the strategic economic development node, which each node in then and related to one mile walk radius. If you look at the first node, I'm circle, you know, right here, you got 75 right here, William Road right here, and our, you know, project is right here in that node. At that time, the ULI already recognized three node along that I-4 corridor. That is the, the first, you know, then and related to one mile walking. Now, the ULI look at, you know, another three node with the total 2,160 acre potential greenfield development. Now, each node is oversized to accommodate the wetland and existing resident. You look at the note, you know, I'm circle right here, including our product, I mean, the property in question, you know, right now, which is under the ULI, which is the national company look at. Now, they look at another strategic, you know, economic development node. This is the then nodes to preserve 90% of the unincorporated land in the study area. Again, did not include in the project.
Mr. Mai, your time has expired, sir.
No.
Do you have someone else in your team that might be able to join you to finish your presentation?
Only my.
It's late, I know, so.
Yeah.
It's past all of our bedtime. Now, yeah, we are, your time has expired, sir, but I appreciate that. I think you've, you've made a good case. The, this is a public hearing, and seeing is that I don't believe we have anyone on the audience, I do not have anyone that's signed up for this item, so I don't necessarily need to caution anyone to limit their testimony to what is in the comprehensive plan amendment in the zoning hearing. So I do have the opportunity for the applicant to offer rebuttal, which would, which, right? I mean, no, if there's no one that speaks, there's no rebuttal, correct? Okay, well, so much for that idea. Just thought I'd give it a shot. So with that, we'll open it up to, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to board Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
This is, this is asking for double the density in the rural area, in a sea of rez 1. The staff, Planning Commission staffs opposed, the Planning Commission board opposed unanimously. I will move not to transmit based on all the staff and planners' recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please take a roll call vote.
Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Hung, love you, my friend, but I'm a yes on this one.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
Yes, it's all, time for all of us to get some sleep, I think. The next item is a comprehensive plan text amendment adoption, the update to the housing element that we've been waiting for so long for. So that is item B3, HCCPA 2208, the update to the housing element. And I see that Jay Collins is going to do this presentation for us from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Chair. Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff, and you're correct, this is our last hearing of the night. This is an adoption for HCCPA 2208. This is the housing section. Again, the housing section was last updated in 2008. We've been at this for, we've been at this for a little over a year now. We've worked with a variety of county departments, as well as had some meetings with stakeholders in the community. Basically, when we update this element or any update, or any element, you're gonna be looking to streamline goals and objectives. There obviously are some requirements from the state, such as to focus on equal access and supply through various objectives. And then there's just ideas that are good ideas for housing, such as linking housing and transportation, as well as a revised housing density bonus, which we'll talk a little bit about. You guys have already talked a little bit about that tonight, and that was something that we actually had a consultant help us with. Just the goal of the, of the updated section is to ensure fair and equal housing access for housing for all people in the county, while accounting for population growth, climate change, and affordability. There are seven objectives and a variety of policies. We certainly won't go into them, but I just wanted to give you an overview here of the highlights, and we're gonna dive down a little bit deeper into the density bonus itself. So the density bonus, again, the structure kind of mimics the movement of one category. So if you have rez 9, you would go to rez 12. If you have rez 16, you would go to rez 20. If you have rez 20, you'd go to 35 units to the acre by applying for the affordable housing density bonus through a rezoning. The affordability term would increase from 15 years to 30 years. There's a minimum of the 20% of the development shall be affordable, that's unchanged. And then there is the area median incomes, which are proposed to increase from 80% to 120%, and there are minimum set-asides for that, 60% and 80%. This information within your packet can be found in Housing Policy 1.3.2 in the AMI specifically on subsection H. Another thing that a lot of us talked about through transmittal hearings or workshops are specifically those AMI numbers, and sometimes the conversation was about rent, and sometime it was about how much the actual household makes in a year. So we wanted to revisit that and be able to show you a little bit of what one person in what three people in a household, so you can see that breakdown of some of the rents, as well as what somebody might make in a year's time. This is consistent with all adopted sections of unincorporated Hillsborough County's comprehensive plan. And with that, the Planning Commission found the amendment consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and forwarded this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And I would like to note that the Department of Economic Opportunity had no objections to this proposed plan amendment. I thank you for your time, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. This is a public hearing. I do not have anyone that's signed up to speak to this hearing, so I will close the hearing, open it up for board discussion. And this is a vote on the ordinance for adoption of this tax amendment, which requires four votes. Do I have a motion, Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair, it looks like we do have somebody in the session.
Oh, I do?
I don't think he's signed up on the list, but I got him right here in the session.
Oh. It's our friend in the affordable housing industry that can probably give us some good guidance. Mr. Wilson, you're recognized for three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and commissioners and staff. Thank you very much. Sean Wilson, Blue Sky Communities, 5300 West Cypress Street. I want to thank staff for allowing me to participate with them in, in several discussions over the past three or four months about this, and for allowing me to provide an alternative perspective on this. I, I applaud the county for trying to modernize this program, but I don't think that what's being proposed is going to be attractive in the market. And if it's not attractive in the market, then it's, then it's an academic exercise. The, the county has got to put forward a density bonus program that, that every developer might look at and say, yeah, this is a good idea, not just the Blue Sky Communities of the world. Blue Sky Communities is always gonna be interested in your affordable housing density bonus program, but our ability to produce units is limited by the tax credit programs and by the Sodowsky Act and, and all those other things. You need to make this program attractive to market rate developers, and the way to do that is to give a much more robust bonus than you're giving. My, my suggestion is that you give an 80% bonus of the, of the base density, not that you just go up from one level to the next. So from rez 6 to rez 9, from rez, from rez 20 to rez 30, that's confusing. Just give a straight 80% bonus across the board, and, and then only 20% have to be affordable. That's gonna be attractive to market rate developers. And then I think you should give an additional bonus of a, of 100% total if somebody is proposing to do almost all of the units as affordable housing. And this is kind of laid out in some written comments that I had provided before. And this is kind of laid out in some written comments that I had provided before. You know, I'd also love to see this not have to go to the Board of County Commissioners every time to get approved, but I understand that, 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 you know, you may need to, you may need to do that. But I think the main issue here is that the amount of density bonus is not enough. So that you're going to have a discussion about 80% AMI versus 120% AMI. I think it's a valid discussion, but I don't think it's going to make a difference because I don't think you're going to get a lot of activity in this program except for the affordable housing developers. I think you need to make it much stronger and much more attractive so that everybody wants to take advantage of it, not just the affordable folks. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. You have actually 15 more seconds, but thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, well, we'll open it up for, if there's no others, public speakers, which I do not see at the moment, we'll open it up for board discussion. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Wilson, for coming in and sharing your expertise and your understanding of the market with us. You're certainly an expert in this. I am, you know, I just think that if we were to say, okay, double your density, and that could apply anywhere, it might be a lot. We are all here already going from, you know, some, some of these to some pretty high densities, and we have to consider the infrastructure that's in place or the wherever we're, you know, increasing density, even if we are getting affordable housing. But I'm open to that. I mean, I'm open to branching out from here to another level like that if it turns out that we put this in place and a year or so from now, we're seeing we're not getting a lot of bites. We can come back and revisit and say, you know, look at that density table. And maybe at the, at the lower ends, you know, this is the first time we've ever had res four in here. So, so at the lower ends, maybe we only go from res four to whatever the next thing is, six. But maybe at the, somewhere in the middle, we, we double the density, but then again, at the higher end, we may not want to double that without some caveats or guardrails. I don't know. But I'm not prepared to make an amended motion to any of that tonight. I'm just saying I'm open to it and maybe, you know, see where this, see how, how this does and come back, come back soon if it's not working. What I would like to do is take advantage of the staff work on this since we last saw it and, and asked the staff to consider what it would, could look like if we were not going all the way to 120, but we were capping it at 100 AMI. Keeping in mind that that is, however low or high that is, that is the average median income of Hillsborough County. I still feel that, you know, providing affordable housing beyond that is not the same priority as it is for those making below average income. That, I mean, average is the average. So helping the people below that is, I think, our first priority and what I'd like to see us try for. So thanks to Jay Collins and Cheryl Howell, they worked out a option B. It's on page two of your packet. Option one is on page A, and that's kind of what's before us, but they've given us option B. And that would, was to say, and they said they, that does pencil out, as they say. So I would like to move forward with option B that is on page two, and it's a minimum of 50% affordable units shall be made available to households earning less than or equal to 60% AMI, and a maximum of 50% of the affordable units shall be made available to households earning less than or equal to 100% AMI. Remember, previously, we've only been going up to 80%. So this is opening that up. It is an option that staff has worked out with Ms. Howell, saying it does pencil out, and it does meet, and I recall I wasn't the only one who was hoping to bring this down to 100%. So, and again, we can try this at option B, and a year from now, it's not working, we're not getting any bites, we bring it back, we think about more density, we think about raising it to 120% if that's what, what it needs. But I just ask you to keep in mind that it's easier to start with 100% cap and come back a year from now or two and raise it than it is to approve 120% cap now and bring that down later. We'd have a bunch of people opposing that, where we can give them the extra room and have everybody thinking us later if that's what we need to do. So that's my motion. Pass this with the option B that's on page two.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Myers. I, I appreciate where you're going with this, Commissioner Smith, and however, it does pencil out, but it doesn't pencil out as well as option A. And we've had 3,000 evictions in the last three months. We have dozens, if, I don't even know the number, but I know it's a very high number. It's a very large number of those that have housing assistance in order to move into whatever available units we have are having trouble finding them because the supply is still so low. And we are in a higher interest rate market, and cost plays, plays a factor. So any barrier to being able to create 10 units or 20 units is 20 families that don't have access to a place because we allowed for it to go to 120% of AMI for a portion of, of the, of the units. So I'm, I really would like to, I mean, and the interesting part about this is that it does, does not prevent an affordable housing developer that can make it pencil out using option B. It doesn't prevent that from happening. Well, it won't happen either if we don't have the pencil out at either of the levels, and we won't end up with any housing. And that's my concern is this is, making these deals pencil out. And the staff concluded that option B may impact the ability to incentivize affordable housing development in high-priced land markets as compared to option A. And our property land values currently are considered some of the highest in the country in terms of the increase that we've experienced as compared to the increase we've seen in incomes for our area. So it may not be as high as, say, other areas, but in comparison to the average median income around the country, our income levels are quite a bit lower as compared to other metropolitan areas that may have a higher market values. So I do think there is a need to consider using option A. And I'd love to hear argument for not doing option A as compared to option B because I feel very comfortable with staff's recommendation that option A is a better choice for creating better opportunities for us to create more units in a time when we still need it. I know, Commissioner Kemp, you are of mindset that we're building houses everywhere, and I do know we are building some, but they are market rate for the most part, and they are not renting. I happen to be looking for a place for a family that has children and have found that landlords still don't understand what the ten of bill rights mean. You know, they're still using that as a barrier to entry. And the, the limited number of units that are out there for folks that are in the, you know, the 50% and 60% AMI is significant, it is. And there are some available units for 80% of AMI. But without having that extra market rate unit here and there to get you to the 120% AMI, we may not get those units built at all. And so supply, in my mind, is the only way to address what we're experiencing in the terms of lack of housing for the people that want to live here, to the point where we have stopped making some benefit applications available because of the high number that are still pending. So I'd be very interested to hearing, Commissioner Kemp, you have, you have some.
Thank you. Can we, can we put up that chart? And by the way, first of all, I'd like to thank Sean Wilson. I mean, he gets 20 gold stars for waiting until this time tonight to speak, and I actually think he made some very good points that we're too tired to listen to tonight, and so we've just shoved them aside. But they're, they're important points, and I'd like to bring them back sooner than a year from now, I'll just say, in terms of the res two, four, and the percentage that he gives, because I asked staff, actually, without even knowing that this was an issue, I said, this doesn't make any sense to me, how we're doing this. What, you jump up a category? So one category is res two to res four, one is res four to six, one is six to nine, and then all of a sudden you go res 20 to res 35? Like, well, how is that? I mean, there has, I think it would be better to do, as Mr. Wilson says, a kind of percentage bonus. It does, like, that is, it doesn't make any sense to me, and I had pointed that out before, but I'm not willing, of course, to do anything to change that tonight, but I think sooner than later, we should look at that because I think that, that is a disincentive. Again, as I stated tonight as well, one of our biggest problems is I don't think it is, you know, getting housing. I think it's getting affordable housing, and I unfortunately keep searching for an article that was a national over decades, written in terms of the increase in housing. We've had lots of development units, lots of housing created, but what we, what, in over the time that we had this huge increase in housing nationwide in Florida, I looked it up for Florida, our, our number, actual just raw number of affordable houses or places dropped tremendously, and that's just raw numbers. So that doesn't even count for the increases that we've had in population. We're just getting fewer and fewer opportunities for that. So if we could just put up the chart up there that we had up there, that you were showing salaries and rents, the graph, which I'm sorry, I didn't get to study, and I'm a little tired, but I want to make a point. No, that's, here we go here. Okay, so this has housing costs affordable by AMI and household size. So if they're at 20, oh, this is how much they can afford. So you're saying that at 120%, a one-person household can afford a rent of 1,551, and for three people, they can afford a rent of 1,900? And so is that what, is that the rent that they would be charged?
Commissioner, basically what that is saying is that if you fall into that AMI, an 80% AMI, and you are one person, that means your rent should be no more than 1,300, excuse me, $1,033.75 per month. So if somebody comes in and they are providing housing at AMI of 80%, that is what they will charge someone for that unit, no matter how much it might cost to build that unit or what the market rate is within that development. If they're coming in at 80% AMI, that individual is paying $1,033 a month in rent as a maximum that they can pay.
Okay, so if they're a three person at 120%, you're saying that the rent being, that's going to be charged is $1,995 a month?
That is a maximum that a family of three can afford at 120% AMI. Because again, the AMI is telling you that that's supposed to be 30% of their income is to be spent towards housing costs. When you go over the 30% threshold, which many, many families in Hillsborough County do, that's when it turns into being housing burden by the cost of your, whether it's your rent or a mortgage.
But, and just to be clear, and maybe I'm a little tired here, but when, when we, when we work this, when we have someone take advantage of this density bonus, the developer, and when they say that they're charging 80% AMI, or that they have like, okay, first of all, we have 100 units, 10 of them are set aside for affordable housing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because, because we keep talking in the 50%. I think that's confusing. But, so, and I know you, you have the different, so you had 10 of them set aside for affordable housing, five were set aside for 60, or three for 60%, two for 80%, and, and then we went to the 120% was the other five, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I have to say, just considering, and I, you know, I've talked to people out there, I don't think the people, I would, I would be curious if the people getting evicted are people that are, are having rents of, of this cost right now. I, you know, I was just talking, you know, just a county employee of two with an $83,000 income, and, you know, these are downtown apartments that are available at like prime locations, and it was 2,200 a month or in the Plant School District, which many people consider one of the best school districts around and people will go to, you know, and an apartment there for 2180 a month. To say that, you know, 120% AMI is somehow, you know, very much affordable more than, more than this, I think is, I just, you know, I don't see this as helping our situation with the desperate need that we have and the, the individuals that cannot, I mean, to me, this is a market rate that they can already charge without calling it affordable housing. To me, it's not very affordable if that's what you're offering in terms of what is needed and necessary and of what people can, can pay. And I just think with our need so desperate, so desperate, that we should be at the 100% at a top level. I actually like the 80% better, but I'll, I'll live with the 100%. At 1662 for a family of three, at 1,300 for a one-person household, which I guess is like an efficiency of some sort, you know? These are not, the 1,500 for an efficiency or a small place for one person, the 1,900 for three, those, those are getting close to what the market's charging in many, many places, prime places, at, at the current rates. Maybe not Water Street, but, you know? I, I think it's just, we would be much better off, we would be serving our affordable housing needs better by going at the 100% or below. And I just think to put in the 120%, 20% is not really even, I think it's illusionary, and it's not, it doesn't really serve our affordable housing needs.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Well, I was just going to comment that I can understand why you would want to do either one of these things. I think it depends on, on what your primary objective is. I think it depends on, on what your primary objective is, as to which one makes more sense. It, it's, oh, the, the chart just disappeared.
Yeah, bring the chart back, bring the chart back.
So, no, no, because, you know, I, I, I'm going to stick with what I said earlier in, in the disagreement I had with Commissioner Kemp, that I really do think that the housing crisis nationally actually exists with lack of product at all levels. But if we're just looking at the 100% AMI or the 120, if you do the 120, you're going to have a larger pool of people that are going to be able to qualify for this program. But if you do the 100, you're going to have people who are probably in greater need that can qualify for the program. So the real question is, which is a more important objective to you? To, to help those that are in more of an acute situation or to open it up to a broader pool? And, you know, I can really see the merits of, of both sides. It does seem to me, though, that if we know that we're going to have to revisit this, which it sounds from Mr. Wilson's comments, like we probably are, what is the danger of going with the 100% now and seeing whether or not it has the desired effect over the next six to eight months? And since we're obviously going to be making changes anyway, you know, if we find that not going up to 120 unnecessarily restricts the pool and, and, and makes it, you know, not the program we want, we can always change it. But I don't really know that there's any danger with starting at 100% and seeing, you know, where, where it takes us in this initial period.
I, I will just suggest to you that a person that is looking for a house for three persons that's making, you know, $80,000 a year, that's the household income. And trying to find a place to rent for less than $2,000 is really difficult. And I will tell you that because I've been doing the research. It is, I don't care where you are in Hillsborough County. So you can't earn more than the 79, or you can't have rent, pay rent more than the 1995 to qualify at the top level of the community that agrees to this threshold. If you bring it down to 100, it means at the, you know, at a three-person household, that, that landlord can rent to someone who can afford the $1,662 if they have two children or there's two adults and a child, or one adult and two children. And if they make $67,000 a year, they're no longer eligible for housing subsidy, and they won't have a place in this community to live. And we have a middle that is with children right now that are really struggling trying to find a place. If, if, we've been trying to talk about getting this done since 2019, when I asked for it in the first place. So if we start here and it takes us a year to figure it out, or six months to figure out that, that we can't get the deals penciled at this interest rate and we need to go to 120, I'm willing to do it. But I really would prefer, let's just go there. I don't want to vote against this because I need to get it done. Okay? I've been waiting for almost three years for this and wanted to get it done. But when our staff tells us that it pencils out better with Option A versus Option B in order to potentially end up with more affordable housing being, being made available as, as a consequence of having the high end be 120%, you know, I, I want to trust the staff that's gone through the numbers, completely understands these formulas, has spoken to the, to the lenders and the builders to find a good place, to, to trust their judgment and their recommendation. But we have a motion on the floor to go with Option B. And with that, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
We have one more item, right? And we need to talk about that tonight, don't we? The next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2023, fiscal year 2027, Capital Improvement Program, CIP, and Capital Improvement Element, or CIE, Schedule of Products, Projects Update. And with that, we have Diego Guerra, who is going to, from the Planning Commission, review that update for us.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the last up for the evening, so hopefully I won't make this too long for you all. Again, Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This item is the Planning Commission's review of the Hillsborough County CIE Schedule of Projects Update. Chapter 163 of Florida statutes requires that the Schedule of Projects, which is a list of the projects addressing levels of service and a subset of the capital improvements program, be adopted into the comprehensive plan and be updated on an annual basis. The update would replace the existing schedule of projects found in the comprehensive plan with the update in your packet. The update is accomplished by ordinance. The review examined the schedule of projects for consistency with the Hillsborough County comprehensive plan, as well as the plans of other, other agencies and adopted, and that are adopted by reference. Displayed is a summary of the CIE Schedule of Projects, which are placed into six program areas. You can see the largest, you can see the largest groups in terms of funding are water enterprise and solid waste. The total funding amount for FY '23 through FY '27 is $2.89 billion for 182 projects. The first step in reviewing the schedule of projects was for, for consistency was to take a look at the projects identified by the county as addressing levels of service and see how the schedule of projects compared to those priorities outlined in the capital improvements element. Capital Improvement Element Policy 1.1.2 states that funding should first be expanded on projects, should first be expended, I'm sorry, on projects that maintain levels of service and eliminate existing deficiencies before expending funding on projects that serve future growth. And as you can see, over 68% of the funds are slated for projects that either eliminate deficiencies or maintain levels of service. On this slide, you will see three policy excerpts used for consistent, for the consistency review. How a full list of the policies are found in the packets in front of you. The first policy we, we discussed in the previous slide, the second two or three are in relation to one water policies discussing infrastructure location and directs that, directs infrastructure and facilities to the urban service area. Staff found that 81% of the overall projects are within the urban service area. The comprehensive plan also has policies regarding the coastal hazard area, limiting public expenditures for infrastructure and facilities within, within it. After review, staff found that projects within the coastal hazard area are minimal and were either to serve existing development, repair, replacement, or enhancing public access to natural areas. Ladies and gentlemen, at its 8 August regular hearing, the Planning Commission found the FY '23 through FY '27 Schedule of Projects consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Hillsborough County comprehensive plan and recommend adoption by the Board of County Commissioners by ordinance. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I have no sign, an individual signed up to speak to this hearing, so I'll close the hearing and, great. I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you, team. Meeting adjourned. I've had, like, three hours of sleep last night, four hours the night before, and four hours the night before. I'm like, I can't. And of course, my accountant, because she's like, I have NACTR tax stuff, I'm not working all weekend.